Check, check, one, two. Check, one, two, one, two. Check, check.
Oh, good. I call this meeting as Tacoma Park City Council to order. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Barrett.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Raise it.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
To...
Pierce.
Do any members of the council have any comments? Colleen?
Actually, I have a question. And it's for the, I guess, the city manager, because the police chief isn't here. There's been a lot of traffic about a bunch of break-ins on Lincoln Avenue and conversation in the neighborhood, but I didn't ever see it come out on the alert, so I'm not sure if I missed it or... It's been said there were six, is it true that there were 16 car break-ins on Lincoln Avenue, or is this neighborhood scuttlebutt off-base? It would be good to know, so I could answer with a clear answer.
Yeah, I will follow, I'll follow up with him tomorrow. We'll get an email out to you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Williams. The Tacoma Park Community Action Group has met a couple of times with some of the neighborhood young people and talked about some of the concerns that they have with our community and things that they would like to see to help them, both recreationally and also educationally. I thought it was interesting that, that when we talked about recreational things, they, of course, mentioned the gymnasium, but also expressed great concern about the Piney Branch Elementary School pool, which has been closed, and they're interested in seeing that reopened as a pool, as a resource for the community. They also mentioned the field behind Piney Branch Elementary School and how that they do enjoy using the basketball courts over there, and they have asked that we add lighting to that field. I know the county is planning on renovating that field, and I hope that they will consider putting lights in, so the young people can use that in the evenings, especially during the summertime. When we got off of recreational topics, they, they also expressed some need for educational assistance, and I thought it was quite impressive that in talking with the young people about what would help them to improve their life, some of them mentioned that they needed help with reading, and some mentioned need help with tutored in mathematics, also talked about the need for some, or the desire for some computer training. And so I, Tacoma Park Community Action Group is looking how we can find resources, but I would like our council to keep these things in mind, and especially, I would like us to talk with the county about the lights on the field, so that they could use the field in the evenings. Thank you.
Mine also is more of a question. I just wanted to check with the city manager. There was an accident on Philadelphia Avenue probably two and a half weeks ago, and the guard rail there was broken, and subsequent to that, you and I had a conversation about the intersection at Chicago, and then also the intersection at Piney Branch, and you were going to speak to the state highway authority to check on those issues, and I just wanted to see if there was any update.
Yes, Councilmember Wright, the guard rail has been reported to S H A for repair or replacement. We did attempt to confirm earlier today what their timeline was, because obviously the work is not done. The individual with whom we need to speak isn't back in the office until Wednesday, but hopefully I'll have some information for you later this week. In terms of the intersection at Chicago and Philadelphia, obviously, one initial thing that we could do is to ask S H A to put up one of those median little signs. There was one previously there, but I think those tend to get knocked down from traffic, so we are going to send a letter over to S H A to ask, at least as an interim measure, if they could at least get one of those signs up to alert folks that there was a crosswalk approaching. In terms of Piney Branch and Philadelphia, this was an area that the staff had had some extensive discussions with S H A about, probably going back two years. We actually did a walk-through with then-councilmember Joy Austin Lane, walking the length of Philadelphia. There's been a number of things that have been investigated. There's still, obviously, a lot of work to be done. One of the, the goals was to basically get crosswalks at all legs of that intersection with pedestrian lighting. Things do take a little while to get through S H A. I think one of the concerns, as I understand it, is that they wanted to ensure there was proper lighting for the crosswalks. We've also had some discussions with S H A about putting a sidewalk along Piney Branch Road. Some of the councilmembers may recall, this is a project we've attempted to get funded through the Safe Routes to School program, and have, to date, have not been successful with that. There are some drainage issues in that location that I think S H A was trying to identify a way of resolving before they did too many improvements to that intersection.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of things to mention. I did get a chance to get away for a couple of days this past weekend and attended my 14th Annual International Gay and Lesbian Leadership Conference, and that was an opportunity to get together with about 300 elected officials and share some information, and I always enjoy getting together with that group, and I will provide my colleagues with some information from that conference. And the conference next year is going to be in Washington. And I note that the, there are some Purple Line open houses. The first one of them is happening right now in Silver Spring, but there are additional ones this Wednesday in College Park City Hall, next Monday, the 10th, in Hyattsville at the Langley Park Community Center, Wednesday, the 12th, at B C C High School, and Thursday, the 13th, in Landover Hills. And all of those are in the evening from 5:00 to 8:30, so if anybody's interested in attending, those are all happening. And I just wanted to also point out that, as a result of the special session of the Maryland Legislature, the Maryland Municipal League did a little analysis to look at what the impact would be from that special session on municipal government, and what they essentially came up with was that in three different areas, municipal revenues will be affected, and in all cases, they negatively affect us. Those will be in the areas of highway user revenues, local income taxes, and program open space funding. So, looks like whenever the legislature goes into session, we get in trouble. So, I hope that some of those issues can be addressed in a regular session. And the next item is, if there are any additional agenda items and any agenda scheduling update, there are no additional items. I did want to point out that for items that we need to schedule, one of them is the discussion of priorities for the Tacoma Metro. As we go forward, working with various entities, talking about that, there had been some original thought about trying to schedule that as part of a council meeting in December or soon after we stop meeting after tonight's meeting. I think we're going to be working to try and put something together for maybe early January, so as soon as we figure out what that's going to be, we will let people know. Also, people have wondered about the Piney Branch Pool, as Councilmember Siemens mentioned earlier, and it was good to see County Councilmember George Leventhal, who appeared at the reception for a few minutes this evening, and that was one of his first public appearances, and it was very nice to see him recovering from his injuries, and he did say that, as, as the city has a discussion about what to do about the pool, that he, he would be happy to receive guidance from the city about what might go into the county budget for whatever the priority seems to be, so we do need to have a discussion about the Piney Branch Pool, and we will schedule that as soon as we can in January. The next agenda item is public comment period. If anybody has any comments to make on any items that aren't on the special session, now would be the time to do that. If you can identify yourself and give us your name, and keep your comments to three minutes. Thanks.
Yep. My name is Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. I want to thank everybody in the city council for signing my cards, my niece Colleen, who's 12-years-old, and my nephew Frankie, who's nine. They really appreciate it. When they opened up the cards, they says, "Is that, that's a real mayor? It's a real mayor." And he was so glad to get that. He's, he'll be treasuring that for the rest of his life. And the, and the city council members, they're named in the, in the council member and stuff, they loved it very much. And it's a great introduction for the, for my niece and nephew in, in, in city government. And I want to thank you people very much for signing that from the bottom of my heart, it's left in my heart. But anyway, another thing is, is you see the T-shirt I got on, Free the Janus Six. Our demonstration we had, I announced a few weeks ago, we had on November 16th, turned out to be a real success. We had a lot of press coverage, and we had thousands of people coming down there on a Friday afternoon, and it turned out to be great. So, we brought a lot of attention to that, the issue of the nooses in our public spaces and the race, and the rising racism in this country. And I think, you know, we should, we need to keep the pressure on that, because, plus the nooses, as we all know, you know, brings, it strikes a point close to home with me. But also, I want to also welcome you people, the new councilmembers coming in, and I, and I can't wait to see how you people do. I'm going to miss Joy Austin Lane, and of course, Mayor Porter, and the others, and glad to see you, see the new councilmembers coming in. And also, I'd like to see, I see the council reaching out more and more to the youth to try and see if we can get more people active in the anti-war, in that, in taking a stronger position in the issues of today that affect them directly or indirectly, both them and their families. I'd like to see what we can do to, to reach out to the, to the people who have not reached out, because they say 72% of the United States are against that war, and I think it's 79 now, but, but it's a demonstration. I'd like to know where they all are. If they're all hiding in their hidey hole somewhere, we've got to get them out. If we get them all out, we, it won't be that hard to impeach Bush and Cheney, and it won't be that hard to end this war. If we can get people out and stand up to the county, we can do it. But anyway, if I can do it in my condition, getting ready to face open heart surgery and getting ready to, and having all these other operations and illnesses, if I can do it in my condition, there's absolutely no excuse why other people cannot take part in their city government, in their national affairs, and taking part in making the world a better place around them. There's no excuse why they cannot do it. We could put an end to racism, if only people did half of what they are capable of doing. Thanks for letting me share. Tacoma Park rules. Carry on. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's nice to greet you from this side of the dais tonight, and I just wanted to lead in your meeting with recognition of a woman legislator who's no longer with us, and as, as many people remember, the feminist tome Sisterhood is Powerful. That goes for women politicians as well. There is a great sisterhood there, and as we recognize Mayor Kathy Porter for her many years of service tonight, I think it is also appropriate to recognize Jane Lawton for her unheimly death. I do hope the, the council will reach out to her family and, and let them know how, how valued her service was as part of the Montgomery County delegation. The other comment I would like to leave you with is about the, the planned addition to the Tacoma Park Elementary School. As Councilmember Wright knows, and Mayor Williams knows, I was part of the, the group three years ago, who started working at the school level and the parent level to forge a vision for the expansion of the Tacoma Park Elementary School, and I'm happy to be a resource to the council if you need to call on someone for that ancient history. The, the proposal that you see is actually, that you'll be hearing more about tonight, is actually something that, that parents and other officials like myself were recommending to the, the school system. They were not excited about it, they did not necessarily want to pursue this particular option, but the reorientation onto Philadelphia Avenue was something driven by the grassroots. And having represented Ward One, Holly Avenue has been a, a major problem for a long time, and I think you'll find that constituents there are widely supportive of this proposal as it solves a number of problems. So, I, I cannot stay for the presentation, and I know that Councilmember Wright can ably handle things in my stead, but I did want you to know that if there is a, a need for someone to come in and, and provide that historical perspective, I'm happy to do so. Thank you.
And thank you for reminding me that, I wanted to tell people that we are going to do a resolution now, remembering Jane Lawton at a, in a meeting in January, and we will, we will be sending that to her family. And also to, also thank you for reminding me that I wanted to point out to folks that if you have comments on the presentation that's going to be made by Montgomery County Public Schools, this citizen comment is the time to do that. Sabrina?
My name is Sabrina Barron. I'm the president of Historic Tacoma. I've been busy sending out invitations over the weekend and today to the Historic Tacoma Holiday Party and Annual Meeting, and all of you on the council should have seen email, and hopefully we'll get an invitation in the, what do we call it, snail mail, as well. But I also wanted to extend the invitation to the community, H T I members, their guests, anyone who is interested in becoming a member of Historic Tacoma. Our Holiday Party and Annual Meeting will be held at the Katie Lee House this Sunday, December the 9th, from 1:00 P M. to 5:00 P M. It's a light holiday luncheon. The plates are usually licked pretty clean, so I think that's a good indication of the kind of holiday cheer we offer, so we'd be happy to see all of you and any members of the community who can join us for that. And I'd also just like to add one comment about the renovations at the school. I think there is some concern over traffic and configuration of traffic. Anybody who uses Philadelphia Avenue with any regularity will know what the challenges are there at certain times of day, and I hope that in the design process, that some satisfactory solution to entry and exit off of Philadelphia can be achieved. Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you do? My name is Richard Levine, and I live at 7420 Cedar Avenue, directly across the street from the proposed school parking lot, and I was not officially notified of the planning process until very recently. And there are many concerns among directly affected neighbors and citizenry who live on Philadelphia, who live on Cedar, who live on Birch, and other streets and other areas of the city, which include traffic concerns on Philadelphia Avenue, pedestrian safety, the flooding of homes. Our homes on Cedar Avenue have experienced severe flooding since the construction of the community center, the size of the school, the busing of children, and so on and so forth, which have not been adequately, adequately addressed, because many affected citizens were not notified of the planning process. Now, on a more positive note, I would like to comment and commend the architects for the recently proposed design of the, the most recent design of the, of the parking lot, which from our perspective on Cedar and Philadelphia is a significant improvement aesthetically, provided that an adequate buffer of trees, walls, and vegetation is put in place to block the view of double-decker traffic on Philadelphia Avenue as buses and cars proceed along the to-be-constructed road into the parking lot, parallel in Philadelphia Avenue. So, and that's for, we'd like to see that added, of course, to the design, and however, the other concerns remain and need to be thoroughly analyzed and addressed and studied, and I look forward to this, to that being part of the process.
Thank you for your comments.
Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue. With the discussion with Piney Branch Pool certainly in January, I just wanted to let the council know again that my sister, Kaye Daniels Cohen, and myself are certainly available to the city, and I've been talking, Ms. Miller, about the pool, about aquatics programming, any way we can help. And anybody who is interested in discussing the history of the pool from 1972 on, I can certainly discuss that history, but as we all know, it's, the pool is a great entity in our community, and I certainly hope we can get it going again, and get it open again, and get it used again, and get it programmed again. So, any way we can help, it'd be my pleasure. And I will say that, in personal opinion, my sister was one of the finest aquatics programmers in the country at one time. It's hard for me to admit that, you can see there's no sibling rivalry, but she really was, and very incredible at what she did in her time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sandy Nakamura. I live at 7413 Cedar Avenue, and I want to make a brief comment about the plans that are being presented tonight. We have, I mean, discussion in our neighborhood as it involves stormwater management, safety, aesthetics, and stakeholder notification. I'm going to speak most specifically about stormwater management, because it involves relatively few homes. The, the end of Cedar Avenue has had sewage in its basements about three times in the last 10 years, and we're extremely concerned about the asphalt that's being added to this project, and the stormwater management, and how that's all going to work out, and how our, our stormwater grates aren't going to just be blown off, and, and your basement also isn't going to be flooded. So, I hope that you'll ask many questions about how this project is going to manage the stormwater. We're also extremely concerned about the reopening of the intersection at Birch Avenue. The fence that now runs from Cedar to Holly was placed there somewhere between, I would say, 15 and 20 years ago, because there was an accident at that corner. A child ran right out into Birch, on, on, onto East West Highway, and was hit. So, there's a reason that that fence is there, and we're now going to breach it, and are going to have to figure out how to make that safe, and also how to make traffic move on East West Highway. I have copies of some questions, which I'll hand out as soon as I run home and get a few more copies.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Lang, and I live at 41 Philadelphia Avenue, and I'm, I'm here because of proposed school expansion as well. I'm very happy that they're expanding the school, but I'm concerned about the proposed new driveway and parking lot. Sometimes, in the past, when neighbors have spoken up with these concerns, they've sort of been told, "Well, you had your time to comment in the spring," and you didn't. But apparently, the best I can make out, they only contacted people who lived directly adjacent to the school. They didn't con, you know, their definition of neighborhood or community was very limited one. I live at 41 Philadelphia, which is fairly close, two, three blocks away. I didn't know anything about this. I knew they were holding meetings, I had no idea they were going to add an intersection and, and, and a parking lot. So, I'm not, I'm, you know, that's fine, because we know now, but I'm just hoping that it is discussed and fully looked at now, and not rushed through with the excuse that everyone knew about it last spring, because they didn't. And the, the thing that first concerned me is I, my son attended there, he was a second grader there last year, so now he's left there, but all three years, I walked him. And I walked along Philadelphia, and I live along Philadelphia, so I know how dangerous that road is, walking along it, walk, trying to cross it, and, and I would always breathe a sigh of relief when I reached that fence, when I, when, when, when I crossed Philadelphia by the library parking lot and got to that fence, because then I could finally let go of my son's hand. And if I had my younger daughter, you know, they were somewhat safe, there was a, there was a fence there. And now that they're going to take out that fence, and I'm really concerned about pedestrian safety. I'm also concerned about traffic. Actually, I'm more concerned about pedestrian safety than traffic, to be frank, because I'm a walker, and I, and I value walking so much. But, but I'm concerned about the traffic, they haven't done a traffic study yet. It would seem to me, if you add an intersection, you're going to slow the traffic, which is already terrible in the mornings. Aesthetic concerns, I'm not sure what it's going to look like right now, but that's something I hope that is examined as well. But right now, what I'm most concerned about is pedestrian safety and the safety of children. They say this is going to improve the safety by dividing car from bus traffic. I don't think so. I, I think it's going to endanger walkers.
Thank you.
My name is Elaine Pierce Hall. I'm with Historic Tacoma. I just want to say that in the last few weeks, I've gotten a lot of phone calls from folks in the neighborhood who were really very concerned about the Tacoma Park Elementary School project, and I'm a little surprised to hear that it was going on for three years. And so many people were uninformed, unaware of really how it was going to impact them and what was going on, and that was even going on, and I've, so I think there are really some important issues on notification that you should explore. And additionally, I took a look at the sign that was posted not all that long ago, one sign that was apparently on Holly, it was moved down to Philadelphia, and it's called a Design Advisory Committee. Now, I'm not sure a lot of people would really understand what that means. It's not construction, or, there's no, no words in here that really convey, I think, the kind of disruption that's going to happen. And looking at the last design, concerned about how the retaining walls are going to be, it's really very sad for folks on Philadelphia, because it's kind of putting another road parallel to Philadelphia Avenue, putting another impact as the buses go off of Philadelphia, and will turn up this long, sneaky road that will parallel for a while, and then twist around, and so people who live in that area will get quite a view of traffic, both at ground level and at an elevated level. And I'm, I'm also just wondering why we're putting so much density on this little property. It's been designed for 500 students, and the traffic on Philadelphia, as we all know, is an absolute disaster, and if there's one thing I've heard, is people are, are really asking that question. So, those are some things for you to think about as you hear the plan tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's nice to greet you from this side of the dais tonight, and I just wanted to lead in your meeting with a recognition of a woman legislator who's no longer with us, and as, as many people remember, the feminist tome Sisterhood is Powerful. That goes for women politicians as well. There is a great sisterhood there, and as we recognize Mayor Kathy Porter for her many years of service tonight, I think it is also appropriate to recognize Jane Lawton for her unheimly death. I do hope that the council will reach out to her family and, and let them know how, how valued her service was as part of the Montgomery County delegation. The other comment I would like to leave you with is about the, the planned addition to the Tacoma Park Elementary School. As Councilmember Wright knows, and Mayor Williams knows, I was part of the, the group three years ago, who started working at the school level and the parent level to forge a vision for the expansion of the Tacoma Park Elementary School, and I'm happy to be a resource to the council if you need to call on someone for that ancient history. The, the proposal that you see is actually, that you'll be hearing more about tonight, is actually something that, that parents and other officials like myself were recommending to the, the school system. They were not excited about it, they did not necessarily want to pursue this particular option, but the reorientation onto Philadelphia Avenue was something driven by the grassroots. And having represented Ward One, Holly Avenue has been a, a major problem for a long time, and I think you'll find that constituents there are widely supportive of this proposal as it solves a number of problems. So, I, I cannot stay for the presentation, and I know that Councilmember Wright can ably handle things in my stead, but I did want you to know that if there is a, a need for someone to come in and, and provide that historical perspective, I'm happy to do so. Thank you.
And thank you for reminding me that, I wanted to tell people that we are going to do a resolution now, remembering Jane Lawton at a, in a meeting in January, and we will, we will be sending that to her family. And also to, also thank you for reminding me that I wanted to point out to folks that if you have comments on the presentation that's going to be made by Montgomery County Public Schools, this citizen comment is the time to do that. Sabrina?
My name is Sabrina Barron. I'm the president of Historic Tacoma. I've been busy sending out invitations over the weekend and today to the Historic Tacoma Holiday Party and Annual Meeting, and all of you on the council should have seen email, and hopefully we'll get an invitation in the, what do we call it, snail mail, as well. But I also wanted to extend the invitation to the community, H T I members, their guests, anyone who is interested in becoming a member of Historic Tacoma. Our Holiday Party and Annual Meeting will be held at the Katie Lee House this Sunday, December the 9th, from 1:00 P M. to 5:00 P M. It's a light holiday luncheon. The plates are usually licked pretty clean, so I think that's a good indication of the kind of holiday cheer we offer, so we'd be happy to see all of you and any members of the community who can join us for that. And I'd also just like to add one comment about the renovations at the school. I think there is some concern over traffic and configuration of traffic. Anybody who uses Philadelphia Avenue with any regularity will know what the challenges are there at certain times of day, and I hope that in the design process, that some satisfactory solution to entry and exit off of Philadelphia can be achieved. Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you do? My name is Richard Levine, and I live at 7420 Cedar Avenue, directly across the street from the proposed school parking lot, and I was not officially notified of the planning process until very recently. And there are many concerns among directly affected neighbors and citizenry who live on Philadelphia, who live on Cedar, who live on Birch, and other streets and other areas of the city, which include traffic concerns on Philadelphia Avenue, pedestrian safety, the flooding of homes. Our homes on Cedar Avenue have experienced severe flooding since the construction of the community center, the size of the school, the busing of children, and so on and so forth, which have not been adequately, adequately addressed, because many affected citizens were not notified of the planning process. Now, on a more positive note, I would like to comment and commend the architects for the recently proposed design of the, the most recent design of the, of the parking lot, which from our perspective on Cedar and Philadelphia is a significant improvement aesthetically, provided that an adequate buffer of trees, walls, and vegetation is put in place to block the view of double-decker traffic on Philadelphia Avenue as buses and cars proceed along the to-be-constructed road into the parking lot, parallel in Philadelphia Avenue. So, and that's for, we'd like to see that added, of course, to the design, and however, the other concerns remain and need to be thoroughly analyzed and addressed and studied, and I look forward to this, to that being part of the process.
Thank you for your comments.
Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue. With the discussion with Piney Branch Pool certainly in January, I just wanted to let the council know again that my sister, Kaye Daniels Cohen, and myself are certainly available to the city, and I've been talking, Ms. Miller, about the pool, about aquatics programming, any way we can help. And anybody who is interested in discussing the history of the pool from 1972 on, I can certainly discuss that history, but as we all know, it's, the pool is a great entity in our community, and I certainly hope we can get it going again, and get it open again, and get it used again, and get it programmed again. So, any way we can help, it'd be my pleasure. And I will say that, in personal opinion, my sister was one of the finest aquatics programmers in the country at one time. It's hard for me to admit that, you can see there's no sibling rivalry, but she really was, and very incredible at what she did in her time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sandy Nakamura. I live at 7413 Cedar Avenue, and I want to make a brief comment about the plans that are being presented tonight. We have, I mean, discussion in our neighborhood as it involves stormwater management, safety, aesthetics, and stakeholder notification. I'm going to speak most specifically about stormwater management, because it involves relatively few homes. The, the end of Cedar Avenue has had sewage in its basements about three times in the last 10 years, and we're extremely concerned about the asphalt that's being added to this project, and the stormwater management, and how that's all going to work out, and how our, our stormwater grates aren't going to just be blown off, and, and your basement also isn't going to be flooded. So, I hope that you'll ask many questions about how this project is going to manage the stormwater. We're also extremely concerned about the reopening of the intersection at Birch Avenue. The fence that now runs from Cedar to Holly was placed there somewhere between, I would say, 15 and 20 years ago, because there was an accident at that corner. A child ran right out into Birch, on, on, onto East West Highway, and was hit. So, there's a reason that that fence is there, and we're now going to breach it, and are going to have to figure out how to make that safe, and also how to make traffic move on East West Highway. I have copies of some questions, which I'll hand out as soon as I run home and get a few more copies.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Lang, and I live at 41 Philadelphia Avenue, and I'm, I'm here because of proposed school expansion as well. I'm very happy that they're expanding the school, but I'm concerned about the proposed new driveway and parking lot. Sometimes, in the past, when neighbors have spoken up with these concerns, they've sort of been told, "Well, you had your time to comment in the spring," and you didn't. But apparently, the best I can make out, they only contacted people who lived directly adjacent to the school. They didn't con, you know, their definition of neighborhood or community was very limited one. I live at 41 Philadelphia, which is fairly close, two, three blocks away. I didn't know anything about this. I knew they were holding meetings, I had no idea they were going to add an intersection and, and, and a parking lot. So, I'm not, I'm, you know, that's fine, because we know now, but I'm just hoping that it is discussed and fully looked at now, and not rushed through with the excuse
Pedestrian safety, the flooding of homes. Our homes on Cedar Avenue have experienced severe flooding since the construction of the community center, the size of the school, the busing of children, and so on and so forth, which have not been adequately addressed because many affected citizens were not notified of the planning process. Now, on a more positive note, I would like to comment and commend the architects for the recently proposed design of the, uh, the most recent design of the parking lot, which from our perspective on Cedar and Philadelphia is a significant improvement aesthetically, provided that an adequate buffer of trees, walls, and vegetation is put in place to block the view of double-decker traffic on Philadelphia Avenue as buses and cars proceed along the to-be-constructed road into the parking lot, parallel to Philadelphia Avenue. So, in that score, we'd like to see that added, of course, to the design. And however, the other concerns remain and need to be thoroughly analyzed and addressed and studied, and I look forward to this, uh, to that being part of the process.
Thank you.
Thank your comments.
Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue. With the discussion with Piney Branch Pool certainly in January, I just wanted to let the council know again that my sister, Kaye Daniels-Cohen, and myself are certainly available to the city, and I've been talking to Ms. Miller about the pool, about aquatics programming, any way we can help. And anybody who is interested in discussing the history of the pool from 1972 on, I can certainly discuss that history. But, as we all know, it's, uh, the pool is a great entity in our community, and I certainly hope we can get it going again, and get it open again, and get it used again, and get it programmed again. So, any way we can help, it'll be my pleasure. And I will say that, in personal opinion, my sister was one of the finest aquatics programmers in the country at one time. Uh, it's hard for me to admit that, you can see there's no sibling rivalry, but she really was, and very incredible at what she did in her time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sandy Nakamura. I live at 7413 Cedar Avenue, and I want to make a brief comment about the plans that are being presented tonight. We have, I mean, discussion in our neighborhood as it involves stormwater management, safety, aesthetics, and stakeholder notification. Um, I'm gonna speak most specifically about stormwater management because it involves relatively few homes. The end of Cedar Avenue has had sewage in its basements about three times in the last 10 years, and, um, we're extremely concerned about the asphalt that's being added to this project, um, and the stormwater management, and how that's all gonna work out, and how our, uh, our stormwater grates aren't gonna just be blown off, and, um, and your basement also isn't gonna be flooded. So, I hope that you'll ask many questions about how this project is gonna manage the We're also extremely concerned about the reopening of the intersection at Birch Avenue. The fence that now runs from Cedar to Holly was placed there somewhere between, I would say, 15 and 20 years ago because there was an accident at that corner. A child ran right out into Birch, uh, on, on, onto East West Highway and was hit. So, there's a reason that that fence is there, and we're now gonna breach it, and are gonna have to figure out how to make that safe, and also how to make traffic move on East West Highway. Um, I have copies of some questions, which I'll hand out as soon as I run home and get a few more copies.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Lang, and I live at 41 Philadelphia Avenue, and I'm, I'm here because of proposed school expansion as well. I'm very happy, um, that they're expanding the school, but I'm concerned about the, um, proposed new driveway and parking lot. Sometimes, in the past, when neighbors have spoken up with these concerns, they've sort of been told, "Well, you had your time to comment in the spring," and you didn't. But apparently, the best I can make out, they only contacted people who lived directly adjacent to the school. They didn't con, uh, you know, their definition of neighborhood or community was very limited one. I live at 41 Philadelphia, which is fairly close, two, three blocks away. I didn't know anything about this. I knew they were holding meetings, I had no idea they were gonna, um, add an intersection and, and, and a parking lot. So, I'm not, I'm, you know, that's fine, 'cause we know now, but I'm just hoping that it is discussed and fully looked at now, and not rushed through with the excuse that everyone knew about it last spring, 'cause they didn't. Um, and the, the thing that first concerned me is I, um, my son attended there, um, he was a second grader there last year, so now he's left there, but all three years, I walked him. And I walked along Philadelphia, um, and I live along Philadelphia, so I know how dangerous that road is, walking along it, walk, trying to cross it, uh, um, and, and I would always breathe a sigh of relief when I reached that fence, when I, when, when, when I crossed Philadelphia by the library parking lot and got to that fence, because then I could finally let go of my son's hand. And if I had my younger daughter, you know, they were somewhat safe, there was a, there was a fence there. Um, and now that they're gonna take out that fence, and I'm really concerned about pedestrian safety. I'm also concerned about traffic, actually, I'm more concerned about pedestrian safety than traffic, to be frank, 'cause I'm a walker, and I, and I value walking so much. Um, and, but, but I'm concerned about the traffic, they haven't done a traffic study yet. It would seem to me, if you add an intersection, you're gonna slow the traffic, which is already terrible, um, in the mornings. Aesthetic concerns, I'm not sure what it's gonna look like right now, but that's something I hope that is examined as well. But right now, what I'm most concerned about is pedestrian safety and the safety of children. They say this is gonna improve the safety by dividing car from bus traffic, I don't think so. I, I think it's gonna endanger walkers.
Thank you.
My name is Elaine Pierce-Hall, I'm with the State Department. I just wanna say that in the last few weeks, I've gotten a lot of phone calls from folks in the neighborhood who were really very concerned about the Tacoma Park Elementary School project, and I'm a little surprised to hear that it was going on for three years. And so many people were uninformed, unaware of really how it was gonna impact them, and what was going on, and that was even going on, and I've, uh, so I think there are really some important issues on notification that you should explore. And, um, additionally, I took a look at the sign that was posted not all that long ago, one sign that was apparently on Holly, it was moved down to Philadelphia, and it's called a Design Advisory Committee. Now, I'm not sure a lot of people would really understand what that means. It's not construction, or, there's no, no words in here that really convey, I think, the kind of disruption that's going to happen. Um, and looking at the last design, um, concerned about how the retaining walls are going to be, it's really very sad for folks on Philadelphia because it's kind of putting another road parallel to Philadelphia Avenue, putting another impact as the buses go off of Philadelphia and will turn up this long, sneaky road that will parallel for a while and then twist around, and so people who live in that area will get quite a view of traffic, both at ground level and at an elevated level. And I'm, I'm also just wondering why we're putting so much density on this little property. Uh, it's been designed for 500 students, and the traffic on Philadelphia, as we all know, is an absolute disaster. And if there's one thing I've heard, is people are, are really asking that question. So, those are some things for you to think about as you hear the plan tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's John McLaren, I'm a staffer in the Rec Department. I've been asked by a couple of the local youth who are being mentored by Councilmember Siemens and Civic Engagement to just introduce that they're going to be speaking on some of their concerns.
Hi, my name is Lance Sumo.
Uh, my name is Peter.
Hi, my name is Drew.
My name is Elton.
My name is Ray Sharp.
Well, I, I was, um, thinking, well, we shouldn't have to have memberships, um, for the Rec Center, 'cause some of us just, we just wanna play games and be able to use the Xboxes and all that stuff.
And we would like to have lights in the back of the, on Piney Branch School, where we can play basketball during the summer longer when it gets dark, and it'll be more safer back there, and that's all I have to say.
Appreciate your comments. Anytime you have any other comments, feel free to come back and let us know. Any other comments? All right, the next item is the City Manager's comments.
Thank you, I'll be brief, I know we're starting to run a little bit behind. Um, at last week's council meeting, uh, Councilmember Clay asked some questions about the comprehensive annual financial report, specifically what's referred to as a statement of activities, where it takes all the expenditures with a particular department and kind of compares them to the revenues that they bring in. Following last week's meeting and Councilmember Clay's inquiry, Ms. Brooks and I kind of took a look at that, and basically, I'm not sure we would be 100% in agreement with the way the, um, auditors sort of classified some of the revenues in terms of which department they assigned that to, my guess, and I'll give you a more specific report at a future date, is that the Public Works revenues were probably understated somewhat, but I think the issue that Councilmember Clay had raised was whether or not, uh, the Public Works Department operations were close to break even, and, and they are not. Uh, but I'll get you a more specific answer, but I did want to address that. Uh, Ms. Brooks has kind of conveyed that issue to the firms that we work with, and I think going forward, we'll probably work a little bit more closely with them in terms of which revenue sources are associated with each department. Uh, but I'll try to get you a more specific breakdown, Councilmember Clay, probably in the next week or so.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. Um, you know, after I looked at that a little bit more, I realized things like building services were included in that.
That's correct.
And when we were talking about the break-even issues, we were really talking about it in the context of when we take on an activity.
Right.
Are we getting reimbursed close to what the cost was? And what I remember the conversation coming out of the TASD was that for the specific items that we get reimbursed for, the matchup between the reimbursement and the cost were much closer than for many of the other activities that we engaged in.
Right, and that's correct. I think when, when you try to sort of roll everything up, and as Ms. Brooks mentioned, when you look at Public Works, um, and this is appropriate, what was rolled into that was also stormwater management, so you kind of need to look at it in a, in a comprehensive fashion, but I will get you more information so you can see a little more closely what they did with that. Um, Chief Rucucci was not able to be here this evening. He did ask that I share with the council about an arrest that was made earlier this, today. Um, we did have a vehicle stolen in the city on Friday, one of our officers being very alert, remember the description, and late this afternoon, there were four suspects taken into custody for stealing that vehicle. Um, as I was leaving for the meeting, I think they were still searching for the fifth individual, um, but I'm sure there'll be an advisory sent out by the Police Department tomorrow. I also wanted to mention that we, with all some of the recent street robberies, um, there are, understandably are some concerns about streetlight outages. Um, one of the things that the chief and I have talked about in the past, and just wanted to assure the council as well as the community, that as our officers are patrolling, they are keeping an eye out for any, uh, streetlight outages, those are being reported promptly to Pepco. Some of those issues are taking quite a while, uh, to resolve. I did send an email earlier today, uh, to the governmental affairs liaison from Pepco asking for some clarification about what they consider to be a timely response, and at what point, if it's not resolved, um, who I should go to further up the chain to try to get those resolved. So, as soon as I get that information back from the council, I will share that with you. Um, also wanted to mention to the council that I did have a meeting with the, um, major players from James F. Knott Construction. They are the contractor for the first phase of the community center. We met last week to kind of see where they were at in addressing some of the punch list items. Um, our architect was present at that meeting, did an inspection, and there are some items that have been resolved, but we still have a longer list than I would care to, um, of issues yet to be resolved. I think we are fast reaching the point, um, where the parties may just be at a stalemate in terms of what is their responsibility and what is the city's, and probably at an appropriate time in consultation with the mayor in January. I'd like to brief the council on where we are at in those discussions. Um, on a somewhat happier note, um, the library director did inform me, um, about a very generous donation that has been made to them today. Some of the council members may recall that, um, Mike Morrissey was a patron who used the library. He was not a Tacoma Park resident, but, uh, following his untimely death, a group of his friends hold a charity golf tournament, um, every year, and the library has been the beneficiary of, uh, their charitable activity through their golf tournament. Um, earlier today, they did present, uh, Ms. Arnold Robbins with a check for $6,500, um, with some of the proceeds from their golf tournament. Um, I know, at least in the years that I have been with the city, I believe they have presented checks for multiple years of about $5,000. Um, so their contributions, um, have added up quite a bit over the years and have certainly benefited, uh, many people in the community. If the council would consider it appropriate, um, it might be a nice gesture to thank them more formally by either a proclamation or a resolution, um, just to thank them for their ongoing generosity to the library.
Good idea, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions for the City Manager? Uh, we now have a special session, and the first item on that special session is a resolution recognizing someone who has been familiar to all us for a long time, and, uh, would somebody like to introduce the resolution recognizing Kathy Porter?
Second.
Okay, uh, council comments.
Go ahead. Um, I have an embarrassing story to tell, it's about me and not Kathy, so you can relax. I know, somebody, Suzanne already went darn.
Typical politician.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Thank you very much for that story.
Oh, rushing along. Well, so I knew Kathy was, um, you know, on the council, and, um, she was also at the Center on Budget and Policy Priorities, and I knew of her work there, and, um, I'm embarrassed to say, I never put the two together until quite a few years later. This is same Kathy Porter, oh my God. Anyway, um, but you have taught me many, many things over the years. Um, I watched on television and sat in the audience and learned how, um, you gather votes together, and that's the way you get stuff passed. You don't just, uh, beat somebody over the head and expect to convince people. You have to have an argument, but you also have to find out how to, how to work with them and, and get it done, and it's something I've, um, really admired about you. And, um, it's, uh, it's meant that you've gotten a lot of things accomplished, um, by, by, by doing that, and it's, um, it's, it's been a good lesson for me to learn, because I tend to be, um, like Mark Elrich, um, of the, "Take the two-by-four and whack people over the head," trying to learn a different style. So, I want to thank you for your service and for those lessons to me, and I'm sure we'll have plenty of other things to say.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I think it's, uh, appropriate that I follow those comments, uh, being one of those who has wielded the two-by-four in the past, uh, and I'm, uh, really appreciate Kathy, the, uh, the things that I've learned from you in many years on the council, uh, both when I've been on the council and watching you while I was not on the council, because you beat me in the election. Um, I, um, I really admire your dedication and commitment to the community. I think, uh, it's just amazing the, the number of years, uh, that you've served here on the council, but not only that, but the, uh, the increasing number of hours that you seem to put in every year. Uh, when I thought you were working full-time on the council, you came back and worked more hours the following year. Um, I, uh, I'm proud to have served with you, and I, uh, wish you well in the future.
Well, um, both you, you and Joy have abandoned me to be the only woman left on the council. But, um, I want to say that, in spite of that, I, uh, I very much appreciate the time that, uh, you've given to the city, and before giving your time for the entire city to our ward, and also that, um, really enjoy the conversations that we've had over the past couple of years. Um, I think it's interesting, Kathy and I often agree on the goal, but frequently disagree on the path to get to the goal, and that's actually, um, I think, part of what's, what has made it, um, so great to be able to talk to her and, and think about different ways to accomplish what it is you want to accomplish, and think about also ways of, you know, appreciating the varied, um, sides to the issue. And we're gonna get a little bit more experience with that tonight with our Tacoma Park Elementary School and affordable housing discussion. Um, but I've really genuinely appreciated the time that you have given to me and enjoyed working with you, and, um, I, I hope to have much more interaction with you in your, in your new role as Tacoma Park citizen. Thank you.
Kathy, one of my first memories going back more than four years now of our association was when shortly after I was elected, you, uh, called me up on the phone and said, "I'd like to come down and have lunch with you." And sure enough, you schlepped, uh, all the way downtown to the Greasy Spoon that passes for cafeteria at the Department of Commerce, and we sat there with all of my colleagues, and we had a nice discussion, and, and I realized that your purpose in coming was not to arm twist or coalition build, uh, but you really just wanted to get to know me. And, uh, I thought, uh, you know, what a, what a very nice gesture that was, and then, of course, when I started to serve and looked around and saw that you as the mayor, uh, the city manager, the police chief, and many of the department heads were all women, I thought, "Hey, this is a real great place." And, uh, now, of course, the tables have turned, uh, but not really, because, uh, I think, uh, what's happened here is that, that you, uh, will have a lasting impact on the city, and, and for those of us that have served with you, a lasting and very positive impact on us. So, I really want to thank you for those gifts and wish you well in the future.
I've only known you for a short time, Kathy, but I would say thank you for the advice you've given me so far, to the many years of service to the city, um, before that. I'd also say, although you've gotten, uh, gotten criticized at times and gotten flak about the building that we now sit in, I do thank you for, um, soldiering on and, and helping us to have the community center that, uh, the youth get to enjoy and, uh, we as council members get to enjoy as well, so thank you.
Um, I think, uh, my, my, the memory that comes to mind most strongly right now is how it took place about 10 years ago in this room, and I got up and, um, lectured the council on how they, how they ought to be, um, paying more attention to childcare regulations in homes so that, uh, childcare providers could have, uh, more, more guidance, and, um, Kathy, you turned it right around on me in a disarming way, you delegated it right back to me and said, "Well, why don't you, uh, take that on and really work that up and bring, bring back the solution for me, for us up here?" And I went, "Oh, no, there's a delegator, that was, that was great." So, I, I really handed to you on that occasion and, and many others.
What I've noticed as people up here have talked about you is that it's very hard to separate talking about you and talking about ourselves, because it's been so intertwined for so long, and relating to you, um, on all the issues of the day in Tacoma Park, and it's hard for me not to do the same thing, 'cause we served together for 14 years, and I can, I can remember times early on when you seemed to be kind of the lone voice on a particular issue or a particular point of view, and I know it must be gratifying that for a long, for much longer after that, you were either in charge and the people agreed with you and worked with you, or the point of view that you had earlier, in many cases, was justified later on as the point of view that you took became the majority viewpoint rather than the minority viewpoint. And it's the sign of somebody who can really work an issue and stick with it and put a lot of time in and be true to yourself and yet listen to others and work on those issues. And if I can just kind of go through this resolution, I don't want to read it, but I just want to point out some of the things that it points out about the areas that you have put so much time into. And, uh, it starts with being president of Southwest Sligo Citizens Association, and I know that that was your entree onto the council, having worked with the neighborhood and worked with the neighborhood on, uh, getting the renovation of Carroll Highlands Elementary School in Prince George's County, and on the creation of the Sligo Creek Hiker-Biker Trail. And those issues may be far enough in the past that many people in the city don't even remember what those particular issues were, but one that is lasting and that people do know about was unification into one county in 1997, and you and Ed Sharp in particular just worked that issue like there was no other issue going on, even though there were, and, uh, really led the city to that very important action. And you were also very active with a lot of other entities like, uh, the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments and served on the Transportation Planning Board for a long time, chaired that board, and chaired the, uh, Access for All Advisory Committee of the Transportation Planning Board, and really had some important, uh, things to contribute in that area, and you were recognized by the Council of Governments a couple of weeks ago at the 50th Anniversary Dinner with a special lifetime achievement award that, that recognized a lot of those things that you did. You were also, uh, on the Board of Directors of the Maryland Municipal League, and you were, uh, Chair of the Montgomery County Chapter of MML, and you were active in the Maryland Mayors Association and President of the Maryland Mayors Association. Any number of entities recognized your leadership abilities and, uh, put you in position of authority and power to make things happen, and you did. And as I've talked with people in those organizations, they were shocked that you weren't gonna be around anymore, and sorry to see you go. And, uh, some people have mentioned the community center, and I know you took some flak on it, and, uh, it was some pretty broad shoulders that, uh, continued to, to work toward the goal in spite of that flak, and, uh, you showed real leadership in that area. And there's, that was only the first page of the whereas', and there's a whole nother page, and it talks about your advocacy for affordable, affordable housing policies. We may not have always agreed on those, but you stuck with them, and we're gonna be talking, talking about one of those issues tonight. Um, worked on, uh, public transit with getting the Route 16 ride-on bus and, uh, your support of the Purple Line. And the last thing I wanted to mention that isn't in the resolution was the sterling performance you gave when you were on Tucker Carlson, on the impeachment resolution. That, that really just kind of caught some people's attention and said, "You know, she has some real qualities that we never quite appreciated in the same way until we saw her on Tucker." So, I, I, hopefully that will, uh, survive on YouTube for a long time, and we just really appreciate it. If it isn't, it should be. Maybe somebody who knows the technology will do that. Uh, so, it's just, uh, a real honor and privilege to have served with you, and, uh, you've left some big shoes to fill, and I hope I can do that as mayor. And so, I guess the next thing to do is to take citizen comment on the resolution, then we'll vote on the resolution, and then we'll make a presentation, and then allow you to have a few words. Pat?
Yes, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, Ward 4. I want to, uh, let people know that, uh, Kathy Porter is a perfect example of what activism really is. She cared about her city, she cared about her constituents, and she got up and did something about it rather than just sitting on her behind. We may not agree with everything she has done, but she had the, she had the courage and the guts to get up and stand up for what she believed in. Also, as a citizen, and as one of her constituents in Tacoma Park, she has always been there when I come to council meetings and stuff, and if I'm not feeling very good, she always came over and gave me a hug. She cares about the people. It's not just, uh, it's not just, you know, a, a political ploy or out to get the vote. She really cares about me. She's always asked me, "How am I doing? How's my back doing?" You know, she's always asking me, "How, how did my test go?" You know, and she's always encouraging me in my peace activism work, showing how, how, uh... You know, and she's always encouraging me in my peace activism work, showing how I'm setting an example for the youth. Whenever I feel that I was really getting weak and slow and not feeling very good, Kathy was always there to help me get back up again. And that is above and beyond the call of duty for any mayor. She was more than just a mayor to me, she was a friend, and she still is a friend. And even recently, she came up to me, a couple of weeks ago, when I lost my, got short of breath and had a heart problem up here. She came up to me, and she, right in the middle of a meeting, in the middle of a council meeting, she comes up to me and asks me if I'm okay. And Joy Austin Lane came up and asked me if I'm okay. And she checked me out, she's also an EMT. Those are the two people I'm really, really going to miss on the city council. Joy and Kathy Porter. They really gave a lot of love to the city. And I think we should really support this resolution and really, we should always try to appreciate what they have done. Never mind looking at all the negative stuff, the mistakes they've made. We're all human, we make mistakes, I've made mistakes. And I'll be the first one to admit it. But Kathy, she has shown me love, not just a politician. Now, this is not just a politician, she's a human being. And she always lent a woman's touch to the council meeting, which is what our city really needs. And I wish other people would get up and follow in Kathy Porter's footsteps. If you care about the city, get up and help do something about it. Please. People like Kathy, people like me, people like Joyce and Terry, they can't all do it alone. We need the citizens' help. If you really appreciate what Kathy Porter has done, like I do, then please, get up and do something. Follow in her footsteps. She has shown me true love. I mean, she came up and gave me a hug when I was feeling very upset one night about my test, about the results. I was scared, she came up and gave me a hug as a friend, not just a mayor, but as a friend. And she cares about her constituents. Thank you very much, Kathy, and I'll never forget the things you've done for our city and for me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Zainab. I lived in the city for 11 years and a half, more than 11 years and a half. And at the beginning, I didn't know you. I was not a participant in the city, nothing. I was very busy, working in the evenings. What happened, suddenly, I started coming to the meetings and interested in the housing and the community and the minorities who were never a participant. I saw you, you were a very nice, wonderful lady, mayor, and you were always taking interest on the community and you pleaded for the community. Lately, I saw after the 2000-something, you were having the city finances or interests by the county and the state. You promoted the city well, and I enjoyed all of that. I'm sorry, I was not ready for anything tonight because I didn't receive the usual weekly agenda. I was just going around this morning early when I missed my bus and I saw there is a reception for you, and I said, "I will participate." I called my friend, wife of Ms. Siemens, but I didn't make sure what time it was. Now I saw 6:00 something, 6:45 to 7:25. And I thought, they put on the agenda over there on the board, it started 7:25, which is wrong. And I was mad because I couldn't see you. I came to bid you farewell, that's silly, but when they started talking about you and I see your back, "Oh, this is Mrs. Porter. Thank you very much. I wish you a lot of luck for your next endeavor, and you will be always thought about us." I came to the city from another city, lovely, our capital city, where I lived three years and a half, and the mayors were confused, not treating well the city, and the city was put under control boards. And I was unbelievably wondering what was happening. That's why I moved it here and for my son's school. But I discovered I like this city, small city, open, liberal, sometimes too far liberal. And I enjoy it, I say it, and everything. Sad, I'm moving out of the city because of housing. Our building will be run down, so, thank you very much.
Erwin Mack, Executive Director, Tacoma-Lane Crossroads. I've had the distinct privilege, the unique privilege, of working under Sam Abbott, Stephen Del Giudice, Ed Sharp, and then the lovely, I couldn't say that about them, Kathy Porter. Talk about distinct personalities, uniqueness. My first meeting with Kathy Porter was at least 12, 13 years ago, maybe more, when I drove a Model T pickup in the Fourth of July Parade, and they said, "We need somebody else to carry one of the council people but don't have a car." And I said, "I don't have any seats, but I've got an open bed in the back." We had to go find a folding chair and put her in the back, and she sat in the back of a Model T pickup for a ride around the city of Tacoma Park in the Fourth of July Parade. That's how we first got acquainted. She was a little shaky, but not her fault, it was the truck's fault. All the good things have already been said, Kathy, that should be said. And my contribution would simply be that there's been, never been a time when a need arose at the crossroads that you weren't willing to come, willing to talk, willing to email, meet with us to see about resolutions. And I'm going to miss you as a member of the city council, mayor, but not as a citizen. And we hope you drop by whenever you want to see something really special happening at the crossroads. Thank you for being mayor.
I'm Jenny Friedman. I'm the Development Director at CASA of Maryland, and here on behalf of all of us at CASA, but especially on behalf of Gustavo Torres, who's not able to make it tonight. And we would like to thank you, Kathy, for your leadership, for your compassion for all of the residents of Tacoma Park and of this region, but specifically of Tacoma Park and especially the Latino and immigrant community. You've been a true leader and a friend to CASA and to the community that we serve, and we're very grateful for your service and we wish you the very best. Thank you.
I'm Carol Stewart. As I sat on the council for six years, I had many opportunities to watch Kathy represent our city. She did it with dignity and caring. I have a small window that I personally witnessed year after year. And that was when Sligo Church celebrated their Festival of Praise. They always invited Kathy in the council, and Kathy always came with a resolution in hand. And she became a friend to the congregation. She was with us during those high times and during the very bad times. 9/11, when we lost members in the Twin Towers. During the sniper episode, when we lost a valuable member of our church to the sniper. She was with us during those hard times also. But at all times, she represented the city, as I said, with dignity and caring, and she did that everywhere she went, and I appreciate that.
Hi, I'm Pam Larson, President of the Tacoma Foundation. And Kathy, I think just hearing the resolution and all the words here show that what a sort of AAA rating you have. Accessibility is something that I've long admired and appreciated in so many ways. And a lot of the things that the Tacoma Foundation has done could only have happened because you and other leaders in our community have made this a community that we all want to give back to in so many ways, including our money, which is what the Tacoma Foundation encourages. Your willingness to be part of our activities, raising the profile of the foundation and raising money, the community center furnishings and the bricks outside, the Realtor Welcome Project and the welcome letter that we send out to all new homebuyers, homeowners that move to Tacoma, our silent auctions, the Oldies Dances, and the Azalea Awards are all things that have been even better because you've been able to spend time with us, and we appreciate that. And I do want to add, we're really happy that Citizen Porter, who is spending next Monday night with us at the Tacoma Foundation, and she's been gracious enough to give us her time and her leadership with our work there. So, thank you all, and thank you, Kathy.
I'm Sabrina Barron, the President of Historic Tacoma. I wanted to add to Bruce's list of distinguished positions, Kathy used to serve on the Board of Historic Tacoma once upon a time, and we appreciate everything she's done to support the organization. I think we are passing a historic moment here, especially with all the top administrations in the city of Tacoma Park having been women, and I hope we've set an example for the rest of the nation as we have an opportunity to maybe do something about that on a national level soon. And I hope somebody got a photo, I couldn't find my camera tonight, but I hope somebody got a photo of Kathy, the City Manager, the Deputy City Manager, the Director of Public Works. If you didn't, would you please do that? It would be a great historic artifact. And like Bruce, I wanted to note that it took a woman from Tacoma Park to put Tucker Carlson in his place and to show what a boob he really is, if I can say that. I also wanted to thank Kathy for her assistance with helping Historic Tacoma, as we've been working toward a 30-year goal of finding premises for the organization, a place to house the documentary remains of the community and the documentary remains of the activities of the city. And Kathy is now going to have a huge portion of those records that will have her mark on them from this long term of service that she's given to the city. Thank you.
Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue. I've known Kathy Porter since the early 1990s, and it's been my pleasure to work with Mayor Porter on a number of different projects, in and outside of Tacoma Park. From One Tacoma to SS Carroll Citizens Association issues to public safety issues and the Tacoma Park Democratic precinct situations. You know, like Mayor Porter didn't have enough to do. She would always help us out during our Democratic elections if we needed a precinct representative. She was always there. Anytime I wandered into her Wednesday night sessions, I'd always ask, "Hey, you got 30 seconds?" Hey, I didn't have an appointment, usually. If I ever asked if you got 30 seconds, trust me, those of you who don't know me, go the other way. Give me $5 and say, "Go the other way," because we'll be there for a while. And she was nice enough, whatever the situation was, to sit down and we'd talk about it and discuss it, no matter how tired we both were. I do want to thank Mayor Porter for her help and her guidance over the last 20 years, a long time. We're getting old, aren't we? And when I think of Kathy Porter, I think of one thing, I think of class, and I think of a lot of class. Thank you very much for your help. Thank you.
I'm Lorraine Pierceall. I'm with Historic Tacoma. And Kathy, you and I, we go back a fair way. And I can remember many, many very difficult struggles we had on issues that involved protecting our community, and I really appreciate the collaboration that we shared and the things we accomplished, so many, many things. You had a Historic Tacoma stand-up in front of EYA in those early days, made sure we had equal time when they were here making a big presentation to the community. The agreement with Montgomery College, the legal agreement that protects North Tacoma from any expansion that the college may do in the future. And I really appreciate those things. So I often wondered, how on earth could you do it? You know, we'd go to lunch and I'd say, "How can you have the strength to keep going forward and moving on?" And it was because of your love of the community that, of course, did that. And so I know that you're going to stay active, and I look forward to that, and I wish you happiness and fulfillment for the future.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Ledlow, Community and Government Liaison for Tacoma Park. As a city staff person, I don't usually make comments on these kinds of resolutions, but I've known Kathy for a really long time, and I wanted to make a special case. I wanted to note that city staff have really appreciated Kathy Porter's service. She attended nearly every employee event. She got to know many of us and our families, and that encouraged us, especially for the staff that doesn't work closely with the council. Her presence at those events meant an awful lot. It's been a privilege to work with Kathy on lobbying activities. I've learned a lot from her. In drafting testimony, Kathy always took the time to identify who would be helped or hurt by a particular legislation. So many jurisdictions ask for assistance that the lawmakers forget real people are affected, and Kathy would remind them, and that's been very helpful for Tacoma Park. Kathy does her best work at night, while I'm a morning person. So after getting input from council, I'd send out draft testimony during the day for comments, as many of you know. Kathy would send hers back at 1:30 in the morning, and I'd look at it at 5:30 in the morning and get the draft back out to council. And our system worked pretty well, provided there was an overnight dying period to do that. When we made changes during the day, sometimes the schedule could be a bit stressful, but we always got it done because Kathy really cared that the testimony was right, and she would put into it what was needed. She does not have a reputation for being early to hearings. Many times, I would be waiting in a hearing room, seeing the time for Kathy's time to testify, getting closer and closer. And I would hope she'd arrive in time, and she always did. It was amazing. Several minutes before she was to be called to speak, she'd come in a room, glance at the testimony, make a few written notes, and then she'd present the testimony, and it was always done very smoothly and effectively. And I was the only one who was nervous. Over the years, council members and I have made a lot of trips together to Annapolis and to Rockville to lobby. If it were rainy or snowy, Kathy would insist on either using her car or my car because they were Subarus. But Bruce probably remembers Kathy's old car, which was terrible. And any car was better than her old car, although I do miss the One Tacoma bumper sticker. And we did a lot of hard work on that, with that car. One of the things that, in all of the downtime that we've had, because there is a lot of downtime at these hearings, I've never heard Kathy say a bad thing about anyone. And even after a very difficult encounter with somebody, and there have been a few that we've been in, the worst I've heard her say is something like, "Well, that was unpleasant." Which is definitely understatement. And she'd turn her attention to the next thing to do or what additional information that person needed so that they would be educated and vote our way the next time or would work with us. I just wanted to say that over the last 14 years that I've worked with Kathy, I can only think of good things to say about her. I've seen up close a lot of the hard work that she has devoted to Tacoma Park and the results for all the good things that you've heard about. It's been a privilege to see it firsthand. Thank you, Kathy.
Hi, I'm Howard Cohn. I know the new mayor wants us to cut to the chase, but you only get to say goodbye to the old mayor once, so let me add a few more things. First, a message from John Hyde at the farmer's market to Kathy. Thank you for many years of service to our community. You have been a model, public servant, honest, accessible, well-informed. Tacoma Park has been very fortunate to have you. Great job, Kathy. Let me tell one story. This is from the beginning, too, when I was first getting to know Kathy. There was a feud dispute involving rival sports leagues, up county, down county. There was a feud dispute involving rival sports leagues, up county, down county. Now, we all know about the passions that arise in politics and in religion, but passions in sports, a different universe. And into this step Kathy, not really a jock, that's true, but she calmed things down, negotiated with diplomacy, pleasantness. You notice a lot of words tonight repeat themselves with Kathy. And at the end of the day, it was a happy outcome. Everyone was satisfied. And through the 10 years of Kathy as mayor, first woman mayor, has that been said officially, first woman mayor of Tacoma Park, not everything ended happily, that's true. But I think it's also very true, and very fair to say, that far more positives than negatives, far more. And what hasn't been said, I think, tonight is the things that Kathy did not do. Mayors are the target, they're the lightning rod. In the midst of criticism, and I think this was unfailingly the case, Kathy did not involve herself in disputes. She did not involve herself in disputes. She did not trade insults. She did not lose her temper. She kept her cool, and as Buddy said, she showed class. As Carol said, she kept her dignity. And I think, in that way, she really kept everyone's dignity. So, yes, great job Kathy.
So, it looks like it's time for a really tough vote up here. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Sounds unanimous. Kathy, if you'd like to come up and make a presentation. Do you want to say anything?
Well, thank you all, and thank you for all of the nice things that everyone said. I really appreciate this. I have to say, though, that this has really been something that's been extremely meaningful to me. Probably my term as Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park has probably been the most rewarding thing I've ever done, and may turn out to be the most rewarding thing I ever did. But this is a wonderful community to be mayor. I don't know that there's probably anywhere else in the world that I could have stuck it out for 10 years, but this community, I think, made it worth it. I've really enjoyed serving with all of the members of the council. I really enjoyed serving with Bruce. I'm sure he'll be a wonderful mayor. We have a wonderful staff. I've enjoyed all the staff people that I've worked with, and it's just a great community. I think Buddy and someone else mentioned that I have had office hours every week for the 10 years that I've been mayor, and it's been an opportunity for people to sort of either make an appointment or just drop in. And through doing that and through going out to various events, I've had the opportunity to meet so many wonderful people. And that's really what's inspired me to do this for 10 years. Tacoma Park is such a great community. There are so many people spending so much of their time and their effort on things that they really care about, and they feel that this is a community worth their spending that time and effort. And that has inspired me and kept me going. And I will miss it. I look forward to going on to the next phase of my life, but I will miss sitting up there every week with all of the rest of you. But I'm not going anywhere. As I said the last time that I sat up there, I'm going to be around, and you actually may even see me up here at this podium once or twice, not every week, I assure you. But I look forward to becoming active and doing other things. And I thank you all for this wonderful tribute. It's been so nice. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I think the gentlemen from the public school system have been waiting patiently, and so I think we can just go ahead with the presentation, and then we'll take our break after the presentation. So, if you all are ready to go.
Good evening. Okay, for the screen. I'm Michael Spur. My title is Architect for School Facilities for Montgomery County Public Schools. And we thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and tell you about this exciting project. As far as historic background goes, when I was a child, I was the project architect on what I called a new building up the hill, which was the 1977 Tacoma Park Elementary School. And now we're back 30 years later to put an addition on it. And the reason we're putting an addition on it is because the students are already there. There's already eight portable classrooms out on the ballfield, and the annex building that was the last piece of the old, old building was retained in the 1977 building project, and it's currently being used for a number of different tenants, but also two classrooms. So, there's the 10 classrooms worth of students that are in remote locations that we now want to make part of the permanent building. So, that's the main reason we're here, to talk about an addition to Tacoma Park. I brought a panel of people with me to help explain the project tonight. Montgomery County Public Schools' project manager, who's the day-to-day shepherd on this project from now until the successful completion, is Mr. Ray Marimati. And also, the design architects, the Smollett Emmer Architects, Jim Emmer, Gary Mosesman, and a civil engineer who can talk to a lot of the site questions tonight, is Sean Benjaminson, a Vattec engineer. I'll address a couple of the issues that were raised, and then I'll turn it over to the architect to tell you more about the project.
I just want to, I keep thinking you're about to start a presentation with this screen down here. If you're going to give us some more first, before that, somebody can take that screen up.
Okay.
That we're not peeking under.
Okay.
One of these days, we'll get to renovating our facility and make this vote.
Okay, the first thing was stakeholder notification was raised as an issue. We started this feasibility study process back in 2006, at which time we mailed out 125 letters to individual households. We sent letters to five different community associations. The PTA put it in their newsletter. We sent memos home with the children, to people that didn't go to PTA meetings, and we put signs on the street notifying we were having meetings. So, having failed to address everybody who was interested in the project, when they did show up at our meetings and said they hadn't been a part of the process yet, we did extend the process to fully listen to them. And as a result, we've had additional meetings, and we've had a walking tour of the site to try to make the proposed design clear to everyone. So, we will continue to try to improve our process, but we think we did what we could to, we can't make people open envelope and read the letter, but we do send out a lot of letters. The second issue, number one concern is safety for MCPS and for the children who are in our care. And that's one of the driving forces behind this project is, besides enlarging the building, there was the issue of the additional traffic that comes with the enlarged building and the situation of the existing traffic at the site today. So, there were issues. We've listened to issues raised by the community, and we've continued to, both at the feasibility study where we tried many, many, many combinations of site plans, and in the schematic brochure, schematic design portion where we are now, we have continued to hear their comments. I took six pages of notes to the last two meetings. We've gone back. We've examined the issues they've asked us to look at. As a result, we've made some continuing refinements to the scheme, and then sometimes the answer is, what we already have is better than what you asked us to look at. But nonetheless, we have taken every comment seriously. And where we are tonight, we're real excited to show you where we are tonight, is a scheme that enlarges the building, provides twice as much parking on the site so that the people don't have to park blocking the neighbors' driveways across the street, et cetera. And it produces room for 20 buses to be totally off Philadelphia Avenue or Holly Avenue on our site, both loading and unloading at one time. Right now, there's room for about eight, and there are 20 buses. And there's also room for, right now, there's room for about 12 parents' cars to stack on-site, waiting for their children to pick them up in the afternoon. Our new scheme quadruples that, the amount of cars we can stack on the site. So, we think if we get all the buses off Philadelphia Avenue onto our site, all the parents waiting for their children off Holly and Philadelphia onto our site, that the traffic on both of those streets has to function better. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim Emmer to talk about the design. And I think it needs to come down.
Okay, then we'll come out there.
Just give our technology a minute here to get started. It's been, I guess it's gone to, there we go. But as Mike pointed out, I'm Jim Emmer. I'm the President of Smollett Emmer Associates Architects, and Gary Mosesman with me here tonight will also give part of the presentation of what we're looking at to resolve some of the issues with the school. Can you advance the next slide for me, Gary? Thank you. I'll talk a little bit first about the existing conditions and the facility, and how we see the site working, and what some of the issues are that we are trying to resolve. Holly, you can see Holly Avenue, Philadelphia Avenue here. This is the existing building. We have the playfields behind the existing building, the existing annex building that Mike Spur was referring to. It was the last piece of the original school, which the original school sat here and was connected to this annex. You can see the eight portable classrooms that have been added across the back here, and the Azalea Gardens here that's on the corner of Philadelphia and Holly. Currently, all of the buses and parent drop-off and visitor parking are here in front of the school, accessing the parking lot and bus loop drop-off from Holly Avenue. It's important to note that this drive right here now is ingress for both buses and cars. Buses stack here along the front of the school. The cars peel off at this point for parking. This is also used for parent drop-off and parent pickup. So, this gets quite congested. If you've ever seen this, and if you haven't, you probably should get out there and watch the orchestrated chaos that takes place there twice a day. As students arrive, they are dropped off and basically led by the hand by staff volunteers across the parent loop to the front entrance, which is right here. And in the afternoon, same process in reverse. Students load buses here at the bus loop and are taken by the hand across this bus loop to waiting cars. So, we're walking through buses that are coming in here and into a parking lot where cars are parked, and then coming and going at the same time. So, as Mike pointed out, in addition to improving the school, one of our goals on any project of this type is to improve the site circulation and really the safety on-site where we've got this interconnection of buses, cars, and students all in one tight location. So, cars and buses come in at this location and rejoin here and exit onto Holly at this point. So, you have both cars and buses coming out at this point. And so, cars and buses coming in here currently and exiting at that point. We've got some, a few parking spaces and some service that comes down along this side of the school. And you can see here the number of houses that do back up to the site along that side of the property. The existing playfield here, and then there's some paved play areas across the back. And that's also important to know that in terms of the addition of the school, it's not only classrooms, but there's also special ed program that's being added, the health suite is being improved, teacher support areas. Classrooms are being added to support all-day kindergarten requirements, as well as class size reduction. So, there's really a lot that's going into this addition to help the crowding that's within the school and to provide the support facilities that these students need. So, it's important to understand that we're trying to relieve the congestion here. As Mike said, we're going to try, and one idea is to look at bringing buses in at this location off of Philadelphia to try and bring the buses up along the Azalea Park and exit at this point. So, we're entering the site at this point with buses and exiting this point with buses, while cars would be coming in off of Holly at this location. And we have a slide here that Gary can talk to you about a little bit as well, but I kind of want you to understand how we're trying to relieve the pressure on-site here. As Mike pointed out, getting as many cars and buses off the streets and onto our site is one of our goals. We're trying to relieve the congestion on Holly Avenue with cars parked here, and bus and car traffic going in both directions, very congested. One of the things we've heard from the neighbors on Holly is that we want to try and maintain this green buffer here between the school and the homes here on Holly, and that's something we're working hard to maintain, this green buffer. Along Philadelphia Avenue, our proposal is to actually demolish this annex building, which is a multi-story building that sits high on this ridge, and replace it with a series of terrace parking and drive aisles, which you'll see in our next slide. So, that's sort of the overview of where we are and what we're trying to solve, and I will pass it over to Gary at this point to walk you through our proposal.
Good evening. I'm Gary Mosesman. I'm the project manager from Smollett Emmer Associates Architects, and I've been involved in the project heavily since we started the schematic design process and have spent quite a bit of the effort to date working and hearing what the community has to say about the site, and trying to make sure we address -- is proposed to be off of Philadelphia Avenue. This is going to give us the opportunity to pull all the buses. Well, first, cars are going to only be allowed to come into the site during hours when the buses are not going to be coming in and out of the site. So, during the morning, at some point, there'll be a cutoff and buses, only buses will be allowed to come onto the site. At that point, all the buses will come on to the site and have a lot of driveway here to go ahead and stack up on. So, you can see just based on that, that all the buses, proposed buses can easily stack up onto the proposed drive or the bus loop. We're showing currently here additional parking for staff. Currently, the school has less than half the required parking spaces. And in the proposal, we are actually getting close. We're at 80 spaces. MCPS generally likes to have no less than 85, but they have, went ahead and allowed us to show 80. And we're going to try to maintain, we're planning to maintain the 80 parking spaces that we have shown. That's a combination of the new proposed parking and the existing parking that's already on the site. As Jim also had noted, we have traffic for parent drop-off, one-point access here where all parent, parent cars come in. It's one-way traffic. There's a lot of room for queuing up of cars. And as Jim had noted earlier about the issue with students and bus, bus interacting with each other, that has been completely removed. Now, we have students being dropped off and parents are able to drop their children all safe, in a safe manner, and they can enter into the school. This says new entrance here. Actually, this is the real actual location of the existing entrance. And I can maybe get in a little bit more depth about this later. But currently, all students and bus students will be entering into the school at the existing entrance location. As far as site access, currently, the school does not have a, what we call ADA accessible route to get to the school. So, in the proposed plan, we have grades and slopes that allow students to go ahead and, students and visitors to come along Philadelphia along this route coming from where we're currently at. And access this up along the walkway and gives us access for ADA accessibility as well as we plan to maintain the existing access at the back of the site. And currently, we show a proposed, and this is feedback from several meetings where there's been a lot of requests for this, some type of access at this point. The grades there are fairly steep and there are some existing trees there. We're waiting for the forest stand delineation plan to come in to see if this is feasible. But currently, we show it on the plan, and if possible, we will be providing that. But there will be quite a few steps involved in that. But that will give access, students coming from this side of the site, crossing down at this location where there's a current crossing guard and give them the ability to come up onto the site and not have to cross any bus traffic or any type of traffic at all, at least onsite. At the front of the building, as I had noted, parents will be dropping off here, will be relocating the existing flagpole to the front of the school. And all students will be entering into the school at one secure location, which is at the main entrance, which is a very preferred and a desired condition in any type of school setting. The pink areas are the addition, the proposed location of the addition. And you can see the size of the addition. It's proposed to be a two-story addition tying in with the lower level or the gymnasium level is going to be the lower level. And then another level above that is going to be at the same elevation of the main, I guess, classroom or, excuse me, the administration, administration area. So, we're trying to keep this as low as possible onto the site and still having direct access onto the fields. And here are, this currently is the MCPS requirements for mulched areas and paved blacktop areas onto the site, which we show here. And then a field as large as we can get it left on the site. We show a baseball diamond, not regulation size, but we still do have a baseball diamond, probably like a T-ball sized diamond. And a smaller playfield at 100, we show currently at 100 by 135. And this is preliminarily at this point. So, once we really start getting into the design more, we'll be looking at being able to give some more exact numbers on that. Can you go ahead? These are some sections, proposed site sections, looking from Philadelphia Avenue, which is on this side of the site. This particular section is taken where we're showing the proposed drive. Can you back up one, Jim, please? Just hit backspace. The first section now we're talking about is currently at this point. And then the second section is going to be cutting through the existing annex building because we just want to give you a sense of what is happening to the site contour at that point. Standing on Philadelphia Avenue or across the street of Philadelphia Avenue, we're proposing to put new plants, either they can be on the city side of the sidewalk or they can be on our side of the sidewalk. That's to be determined. Also, another row of evergreen trees we're proposing to be placed between the sidewalk and the city sidewalk. This is the low, what everybody is starting to call the lower-tier parking, where we have parking furthest away from the site, drive from the road. And we, buses and cars will be coming along this side of the roadway. More green space with proposed evergreen trees, a retaining wall of varying height depending, as we're, as we go up the site, it's, we're chasing grade on one side and going down grade on another. So, the wall's going to vary in height as it goes along. And then the upper parking lot, we're going to have, you know, some type of screening also. We'll obviously have a chain link fence up here for safety reasons, short, like 36-inch, 42-inch-high chain link fence. But cars parked again, drive. And at this section, you can see the sidewalk onto the site and then the proposed building addition. Section A, you can see that, let me point one more thing. This is the existing grade at that point. So, we're going to be cutting some of the existing grade out and actually putting it back up on this side. And the proposed section through what is now currently the annex building, you can see that mass there, that the site, instead of looking at that white building facade, you're going to be now having views out, at least up into the sky, hopefully. And once again, the same scheme, trees and bushes and et cetera to buffer the views from Philadelphia Avenue. So, we've tried to address not only the comments from across the street, residents that live across the street, but as well address the, this sitescape as you drive by and as pedestrians walk by. You can go ahead and enter. Next slide. This is the footprint of the, of the existing facility. We showed in three levels. It's actually a seven-level building. If anybody, I'm sure most everybody has been inside that building knows that it's a large split-level house. I kind of think when I walk in there, you have a lower gymnasium and these classrooms are at another elevation. And then the building is kind of like divided through this portion of this, of the building where you have a lower and higher side where they change in grade and elevation in increments of six feet. You can go ahead and enter. This is the proposed main floor. This is at the level of the existing administrative area. So, we'll still be coming into the building at the same location onsite. Administrative area is shown here. And as you can see in the, we, it's supposed to be pink, but kind of a mauve color. The addition at the back, at the back of the school, this is the classrooms, the proposed classrooms and other functions that are proposed, the existing media center. We're going to expand it slightly. And other modifications are shown in this color here to the existing facility. You can go ahead and enter again. And then the proposed ground floor, which is at grade of the existing gymnasium, all the proposed kindergarten and pre-K classrooms are down on that level because by code, they're required to be at a grade level. And then also the, showing the addition of the daycare facility, which is proposed to be built by HSS. I'm sorry, I don't know the acronym for that, but. HSS, which is a Montgomery County. Health and Human Services, thank you very much. So, we're trying, there is a component to replace part of the annex building. There is Morgan Daycare, I believe is the name of the daycare. So, there is a function for daycare to be provided here. May not be Morgan Daycare. That's a totally different avenue, but that, that's, if they win the bid, they'll be in there. And otherwise, it's going to be open to other people to come in and provide that service. So, and then another modification to the existing building is a computer, a computer room, which the school currently uses, space in the existing media center, which is not really designed for that type of usage. So, the other improvements have been shown in the existing facility on this plan also. And then this area here where it proposes students coming in from the bus loop elevation and coming in, up a set of stairs, they may be inside, they may be outside. That's still in the design phase. And coming up to the main level. Can you back up? Coming upstairs, up into the main level of the existing, of the facility. So, we have students coming together, both students dropped off and parent drop off at one location. Great security for the existing school. And once again, just one access point into the, into the existing facility. And I believe that's it. I think I've covered everything fairly quickly. Anybody have any questions or? Okay.
From a stormwater perspective, currently, the storm, there is no stormwater management system for the site. The site was constructed prior to any real stormwater management requirements. Currently, we're subject to the 2000 MDE regulations for quantitative and qualitative management. As we go through the site, we'll be, or as we go through the design, we'll be providing designs for the quantitative controls and the release into Philadelphia Avenue storm drain system as it's currently going right, right in this area right now. So, again, a qualitative and quantitative controls in accordance with the state highway administration and MDE regulations. Quantitative controls are the controls to hold back the flow of water from the site into the storm drain system such that you're releasing the same volume of water, but at a slower release rate so that over time, the, the main part of the storm event has already bypassed and gone down Philadelphia Avenue as the stormwater from the site is being slowly released at a non erosive rate and a, and a quantitative controlled rate. A quality perspective is, is providing treatment of the oils and grits and trash that are coming from the site and, you know, filtering that water to, so we don't have a lot of grits and stuff into the downgrade system. So, thank you.
First, I just wanted to note that I had some correspondence today from the City Safe Roadways Committee. And they were originally planning to make some comments tonight, but they couldn't do that so that they will be looking at pedestrian safety issues and making their comments January 7th. So, we'll be sure to make sure that you get those comments. And Josh, do you have some questions?
Sure. I have a number of questions. My award is, the school is my award and most of the media residents are affected by my award. First, I would say thank you for doing the project. We are very appreciative of the school system's efforts to improve the school and are happy about the impact that it'll have on the children. Removing the portables that are what we, I think, all consider long-term substandard to teach our kids in. And facilitating the classroom size is very important. So, the first question we didn't really talk about in the presentation has to do with the kids, actually. So, I'll start with the kids. Now, I agree with the decision not to rehab with the kids in place, but I do want to touch on the, the situation with busing the kids to Grosvenor, to Grosvenor Facility. And just want to make sure, is that the facility at 5701 Grosvenor's Lane? Is that, I was trying to determine.
Yes.
Okay. So, the first question is, were there alternative sites considered besides Grosvenor to bus the kids to?
We're speaking here. Yes. We looked at all, all facilities in the area, both public, private, crossed, crossed county lines, et cetera. We were asked to look at all alternatives, so we did. The only available slot in our holding facility stable is the one year at Grosvenor that's available. When we first developed this project, we thought it was going to be a renovation in place. It was going to be probably a three-year process by the time you had to build it in pieces and move into one piece and then tear part of the next piece down. If you saw the slides of the building, the building is a, it's a three-story building on half levels. So, there's a total of six classroom levels and then one level down for the gym. And there's very limited ways to get out of the building to touch the ground. And putting the addition on closed up all the available exits out the back of the building, which made it a very difficult project to do in place. So, that's when we started really searching for who's going to bid a three-year project this size and it has to be with this type of site, et cetera. So, we fortunately found a one-year vacancy that corresponded to the time of this project in the Grosvenor facility. So, it's like we needed a favor and one drop in. So, we've done this before. Well, we do it every time we modernize the school. In this case, a complex addition. We did a similar, similar process a few years ago at Oak View, which is a nearby school that we bused over to, to Fairland Center, which is a, we have, we have four existing closed schools that we call community, holding facilities. They aren't, you know, they're this year's school that moved out of their building. So, we have the four that are available for elementary schools. Three of them are booked all the way through. And Grosvenor had the one vacancy. So, we were able to put this in. But we did examine other.
I mean, have there been, in the past, have there been situations where you've looked at private facilities that are closer to the schools that need to be relocated?
We've looked at them, but there are none of the size that would accommodate us.
Okay. Do you have a sense of how long it's going to take for the kids to ride in the bus? I mean, I know the person for transportation came and spoke at one of the meetings and said he drove it one morning and it took 33 minutes. At that meeting, I asked if we could actually have a mini-study done by transportation where they, they did that sort of for a week, so, at least a week, so he knew Monday through Friday in the morning and the evening, what the, what the estimated time would be, as well as, I think there's a big discrepancy depending on whether a kid is picked up at the beginning of the bus route or the end of the bus route. So, is there any more information about sort of completely how long it's going to take?
They have not gotten back to us yet. They have not gotten back to us yet, they are, they're in the process of determining where the bus stops go. So I think they're looking at lengths of routes and trying to locate the bus stops to be central to, so everybody has about the same, same ride instead of one way over there, you know, twice as long as somebody over here. So I think they're still in that process, but it'll be ongoing.
I, I know that's important to many of the parents as they make decisions about what they're going to do during that transition year, which sort of leads to the next question. You know, some parents will decide not to send their kids that distance, which could result in the school, actually, the size of the school during the transition year being smaller in terms of students. And one concern that's been raised is that then the school will lose some of the wonderful teachers that it has and some of the resources it has. Is there any level of commitment from the county to, given that it's only one year, not necessarily shrink the staff during that time so that when the, when the teachers move back in, we can continue to have the same quality teachers and also sort of the relationship that they have with the principal and how they work together as a team to teach the kids?
I'm on the capital budget side of the equation, that would be a decision made by the, the operating budget folks, but our vote would be, keep the, keep the faculty together.
So can you voice that concern to the operating budget side, or should we do that, or both, maybe?
We can both do that.
If I could add also, I think that during some of our conversations at the school, there were a number of teachers who said if they stayed there during the construction, they would be more likely to leave, quite honestly, than if they had to move, well, you know, to Grosvenor. So that was, that's just sort of the other side of the coin, is teachers having to persevere through three years of construction is also a concern on their side.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that most people have looked at the project in detail and gone to a lot of the design meetings would agree at this point that it wouldn't be a wise thing to keep the kids in place. Having personally lived through, my high school go through a renovation, I know that's not a good idea. But I, you know, the flip side is the county can spend a little bit more money on the operating side and make sure that the teaching team stays in place, given that it's going to be a one-year transition. Do you have any sense for how far into the future this expansion will, will take us in terms of the growing population in the area? I know it's, I can't remember the exact numbers, but it's like designed for five and change and.
Four, it's actually designed for 422.
That's, that's the number of kids that it'll be in, but I thought the capacity is larger than that.
No, the design capacity is 422.
Yeah, it's five, six.
Yeah, I thought it was five and change, and the actual number of students will be in place after they move back in is like four, low fours, right?
We're, we expect right now to have some extra cushion when we move back. However, the phenomenon is when you open a new building, people that didn't used to come to the school suddenly appear, bring their kids out, private schools, et cetera. And we usually experience a surge when we move back into a new building. So we're anticipating some of that, and we've, we've built some additional capacity and account for that.
But does the county have, the county must have growth figures beyond that for how quickly the population, the student population will grow in this area? Do you have any sense of?
We have a six-year crystal ball, 10-year crystal ball, and 15-year crystal ball. Or it's more like an eight ball, but, but, so our, our firm, our firm's six years based on studying housing starts and things that are in the pipeline for, about to be approved by Park and Plan. So we think we have a good handle on that. 10 is a little more of a crapshoot because of the economy. If things slow down or speed up, then things can either arrive sooner than we expected or lag. And 15 years is, is pretty, pretty much a.
But for the six years that you have the better perspective on, is it anticipated that the size of the school will deal with that future growth, or are we going to be back at the?
No, we anticipate that this handling, the largest number we see in a six-year plan.
The second question I have is about the notification issue, I know you answered this before, but I just wanted to clarify. Were there residents that actually were not mailed to who are relatively close to the school on Philadelphia or End of Cedar or Holly?
We mailed to 25 folks on Philadelphia Avenue. You can see on that map that maybe 10 front on the person we're talking about. So we, we went significantly farther in each direction on Philadelphia. The total of 125 names in all.
And is there any plan to do anything beyond what you've already done, which I appreciate to extend the number of meet, design meetings to meet the people that felt like they weren't notified or were not notified, even in that process? Or is, is that the?
Well, I want to say that the people that have come to all the meetings have expressed willingly their opinions on how they think that it'll be affected not only for this street, but that street and that street, et cetera. So just because all 10 residents on a street didn't come doesn't mean that that street didn't get represented by the one or two people that did come from that street. So, in fact, that kind of makes the size of the committee a little more user-friendly if people on a street would appoint representatives to come for them and so that they didn't all feel like they had to come and each one repeat the same thing. Because once we heard it the first time, we wrote it down, so. All I can say is we will continue with their, their open meetings. We are continuing to invite people to come to them. The rest of the process will involve notification and at the, the next step is design developments and construction documents. There's four more, or three more reviews in the process besides the completion of the schematic, which is then going to be a, a public hearing at Park and Planning, a mandatory referral hearing. So there's that opportunity, then there's the three other phases in the process where we're going to make documents available and ray available to sit at the school and answer questions of people that want to take the time to look through the drawings or have them explain to them, so.
I think it would be helpful for me to make sure constituents know, and then also, you have one more meeting, which is on the 11th, correct?
Yes.
It's an evening meeting, is that right? At seven? If you could actually just bring a piece of paper that sort of explains the, the follow-up meetings, that way we can get it to everyone at the meeting, and then also if I have a copy, I can help to make sure the people are aware of that information.
Like I said, we appreciate all the comments that we've had so far, and we are writing them down. We are responding to them, and some of them have resulted in quite good improvements to the, to the design as it's gone along.
Yeah, I don't, I would appreciate, I think you guys have made an effort to listen and you've made changes along the way, and I've seen some of those changes, I appreciate that. One thing I have mentioned before, and I think would be helpful to have at the 11th, meeting on the 11th, is, you know, I think the cross-sections are very helpful, but for someone who's not an architect, the best way for them to see and understand the situation is to actually have an elevation. So I think it'd be very helpful if we could have an elevation if, first, you know, a person standing across the street and maybe even at a height of maybe 15 feet, because there's a number of people who are across the street who actually will be looking out their second story windows on the facility. So I think sort of two elevation drawings like that would be very helpful to people, alleviate some people's fears about what they'll actually be seeing out their windows.
Sections are crystal clear to us, because we deal with them every day, but we understand that they're not, not necessarily, and everybody's vernacular, so.
Yeah, no, I think it's just hard for people to somehow actually visualize what people are seeing.
Yeah, so we will attempt to make a three-dimensional drawing that explains it further.
Great. I noticed, I, I heard you mention the, the idea of a chain link fence at the top of the receding wall. Is that a standard item, or could we actually have something, maybe some people like chain link fences? But I don't, most people, I think, probably wouldn't find them aesthetically pleasing. Are, is that just a, a term you use? Could it also be a wrought iron or some, something that is still safe but more physically effective?
Yeah, it's going to be a guardrail, for one thing, it'll absorb shock. And then behind, or on the outside of it will be a, a fence of certain height by code to prevent folks from falling over the edge. So we will take that very seriously in, in terms of the design of the fence and whether people can put their feet in them and easily climb. That intention is not, so we will design a fence in such a way that it's not climbable. And, and the aesthetic, we will try to, we'll try to, well, we're going to address the entire package, so it's going to be landscaping and contouring and, and material, choice of materials to make this as good as we can make it.
Great. I have a couple of questions related to traffic. So I received a copy of the traffic study, I appreciate that. I'm wondering, not the study itself, but the.
Oh, the scope of what we are going to study, yes.
I know it's still six or seven weeks away till we get the study. But just with the, I think that it would be good to add the intersections of Holly and Hodges, which are not on this, on the study, and also Philly and Birch, which isn't on the study, but it's sort of suggested that because there's a new curb cut there or a new intersection that it might be, but it wasn't clear to me. And then lastly, Cedar and Philly, I think should also be added.
Okay, I'm sure they will be, but just want to point out that the intersection at Birch is the old historic. It was the old way into the first Tacoma Park building. And so we're planning to reuse it, basically, because that's the one place where the site can touch the Philadelphia kind of slopes in relation to the site. So that's the one place where the grates kind of come together, where we can get on the site and then start up the hill. So that's, we were given permission from the state to reopen that, that old curb cut. And since it is a intersection on a major road, it will not be treated lightly by us. It will be, it'll be painted crosswalks, possibly be traffic calming devices of other things that we discussed with the state. And we'll relook at the whole situation of crossing guards all along there to place them where they make the most sense, so. It's not our intention to just create it and wait for trouble to happen. That's going to be looked into too. It's just, it wasn't part of the folks that were presenting to the community at that meeting or not the folks doing it, it's the safety and transportation folks and CPS that'll be talking to the county transportation folks about what else would go there, whether it's, whatever it may be. So that will be an ongoing thing as well between now and whenever it was going to come into, into effect. And in fact, there's a county committee called a STEP Committee, that's Schools, Transportation, what's the? Environmental Police. And it's a kind of a multi-agency task force that helps open the schools, looks at sidewalk, looks at pedestrian paths for the whole neighborhood, determines what streets might need sidewalks added. Traffic lights are part of that committee, stops and signage and all kinds of things. So that all the agencies are going to be looking together at this as long, as well as, as you, you folks are going to be looking at this together to make sure that we have the best possible solution.
Are you still investigating the possibility of a one-way bus loop from the city sort of lot back onto Philly? Because that's in, that's mentioned in the traffic study, but I didn't know since you came up with the new idea of exiting out Holly, whether that was still on the payroll, are you still looking at that?
If you were talking about coming up Grant, where it's currently blocked off and coming up and somehow getting on the lower part of our site and coming up the side with the certain, the side of the building. The problem with that is that the kids get out of the bus on the right side.
No, it's, it's actually, I mean, it's attached to the traffic study. It shows the kids to the east of the facility is the municipal lot for the community center. And it shows a schematic where you'd actually enter somewhere over there and go up and across. And I was just wondering if that's still something you're considering or not?
Okay, the bottom, the bottom left corner, as you look at the, no, that, I guess it'd be the top right corner as you look at it, at the way it's written on here, is a giant hillside with big mature trees on it. So we're anticipating that your environmental folks are not going to want us to take away those trees. And there's a great deal of grade to overcome, because the left is actually going down while we want to go up. So we need to come up the hill where it touches it at Birch and then go up and go up again. And all that way is basically a 5% grade to get from Holly Avenue up to the front door is almost a continuous 5% grade, which is the largest slope you can have without needing handouts, so.
So this alternative is probably, you're not going to investigate this further?
We've looked at it, but we, we didn't find one that worked better than the one we had.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yes, we've looked at all the different things the rest of the look at.
Pedestrian safety is next, particular child, children's, child safety. So the, the stairs up from Philadelphia that are to the left or west of the bus loop entrance, if you are able, I know there's been some trees and you're still waiting for the forest study, are able to create that, the excess set of stairs on the eastern side, would you think about actually eliminating those stairs up the, the, the west side of the bus loop? Because my concern is it's going to cause kids to cross the entrance, and then when they go up to the top of the stairs, they actually have to cross the bus loop again.
We'll continue to look at that, and if that turns out to be the best case, that's, could be done.
I just want to say on the design issues within the school, I think you guys did a great job. I'm not an architect, I thought about going to architecture school, but I think, you know, it's a real challenge to integrate all those ramps into different levels. And I've looked at the site plans a number of times, and I think you've done an amazing job on that. Stormwater management, I think is a real critical issue. So I just want to clarify, when the building was originally built in 77 or 79, you didn't have to abide by any stormwater management rules at that time? And there wasn't anything put in place of your stormwater management?
Well, we had some, we had two grates at the end of the, at the bottom corner of the ball field where everything sloped real quickly down the hill. And went in those two grates and then went underground into a pipe with great velocity. And then it got fired down the pipe to somewhere else. In those days, that was all that was required. Now, as Sean was explaining, that you'll, you need to control the quantity, so you build big pipes underground to catch the water and hold the water, and then you put little pipes out of them so that the water goes in at a fast rate, but it only comes out at a slow rate. So in that way, if we take all the water off that school site that's been firing into the system all these years and reduce it to a trickle, that gives you a whole lot more capacity in your pipes for the rest of the neighborhood to drain it.
So you, you have to redesign for the entire site, not just for the addition, isn't that correct, when you?
Correct, in this case, we would, yes. I wish it was another reason why we needed to go off-site, because the stormwater management was going to be so extensive that we didn't have a lot of room for a contractor to be there and a school to be there and then have to create this giant underground facility while we're still trying to park, still trying to store materials, et cetera.
And portable, and portable containers.
But if we're in the footprint, we're going to have to move out further.
Let, let me just say that we have some familiarity with trying to put in a big stormwater system while staying on the site and parking everybody.
You're still enjoying it to this day, right?
I think we could put the addition in that box.
And is, what do you plan for when you do that? Is it a 100-year flood, or is it, what's the?
The state requires a quantitative control which of what's called channel protection volume, which equates to essentially the one-year event. Over and above that, we're discharging to a state highway right away, which is going to require us to evaluate the 10-year event. So we, a design, this system will be designed for the 10-year event.
Which is more strenuous than 100 years. Right, or not, no, I guess it is, I'm sorry, it didn't help.
I wasn't, I wasn't up here on the council as we're doing the community center, but I think you guys had the design for the 100-year flood as a result of being on a flood plain.
That's my recall.
So I would be, I would be particularly concerned about that if we're only planning for the 10-year event, particularly knowing that some of the residents on Philadelphia and the Cedar have flooding potentially as a result of the, how the community center dealt with the runoff, so. That would be a major concern.
Okay, well, again, although we're showing that road that sweeps down and ties to Philadelphia Avenue, we'll have to put a slot drain across the bottom so that no water gets past our system straight onto the road.
Keep in mind, you're, you're dumping the entire site right now into Philadelphia. When we, when we're done, we're thinking of that bucket of water just cutting a hole in the bottom. So you're still getting the same volume of water out, but it's just going to be over a longer period of time.
Right, but if it's a, I'm not a stormwater expert, and you are, but if it's a, it's a 10-year, if you're planning for 10 years and when you're three, you have the 50-year flood, then that all gets overwhelmed, right?
Well, keep in mind that your state highway streets aren't designed for the. Well, keep in mind that your state highway streets aren't designed for the ten-hundred-year either. They're only designed for the ten to begin with. So even if we design for the hundred-year storm drain capacity in the streets, it's going to be overwhelmed. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, it wouldn't be the same in the end.
Maybe if we could just find out from the city manager what it was that we had to design for?
My recollection, it was a hundred-year event.
And then my last question related to this is, in person constituents, they came up with, or had thoughts about as much as possible creating pervious, not impervious surfaces, including on the, on the driveway, which, which would allow for some percolation through the, you know, the, the earth, and, and limit also that aspect of the, I know we have the drain, the channel drain at the end, but limit the aspect of that water flowing down, which adds an additional stormwater management issue, and also helps to filter the water that eventually gets to the side of the street.
We, we can look at that, we have looked at that on other AMCPS projects in the past. When you deal with a 5% slope, the, the water is coming off, off the pavement rather quickly, so you don't get as much percolation in, in through the asphalt as you normally would, you know, if, if it's such a stable. But, you know, it's, it's something that we've looked at in the past with AMCPS on, on other projects. Northwood High School comes to mind. But, you know, the pavement has to be conducive to the soil below it. You just don't water through the asphalt onto a clay material per se, because you're not going to get the percolation and the pavement will fail. So you need to look at a lot of other aspects, but it's something I don't think that we couldn't look at on this project.
And I guess the next question sort of ties into my final area, so we're almost done here, is around green building. So has there been any thought to green roof on the expansion, in terms of that also helping with the stormwater management question?
Uh, that is a, that is a subject we are discussing with the, with the stormwater folks at the county right now, to see how much bang we get for the buck. Because it, green roofs are heavier, so you have to build, spend more money for structure to hold them up. And they cost more than a regular roof. So we need to make sure that we're really getting a benefit, a, a in-kind stormwater cost savings by doing it to pay for the additional structure and additional costs of the roof. But we are on an ongoing process with the, with the county on that. We met with them again last week, and we're continuing to, we're going to meet monthly until we've hammered this out and we've got a solution.
Okay. And is the addition, will the addition be LEED certified, or what, how is that? Because I've heard yes, and I've heard no, so I want to pick them.
It's going to be what we call LEAD light. It's going to be the, we're going to use the design practices that make sense. I'm old school, I go, good design, LEED is just a quantification of good design. So we will be doing good design, but we won't necessarily, well, we know we will not be going through the, the paperwork process to get the official certification, but we're going to do the equivalent of what we do on our LEED certified buildings. Because the county's mandated that, that all our new goings be LEED certified. So we've gone through the process enough to know what it is we are going to be able to do on our schools. And we will, the things that make sense will be done on this school, but since it's an addition to a larger school that wasn't LEED and isn't going to be LEED anytime soon, it's kind of a waste of money to do it on the certification portion on the, on the addition project. But we're not going to not do smart things just because we're not filling out the paperwork.
To sort of maybe more cutting edge related to green design, has there been any thought of solar panels in any way on the facility?
We've done a few solar panels in verse, in fact, we've got an array of them up on the middle school right now as a demonstration. They, they haven't been that cost-effective for us, because we don't use that much hot water. We're kind of more, with a, with a well-designed, top-of-the-oriented building with well-insulated walls and roof, and the correct glazing in the windows, we're more of a year-round cooling situation than we are a heating situation, just because the heat from the lights and the, and the bodies. If it's a well-insulated box, they introduce the heat and the heat stays there. So we're, it's, the, the cooling side of the equation is the bigger energy usage for us.
What about, I mean, that's one type of solar panel that heats water, what about one that directly uses electricity?
Well, we're going to tell you, we've tried that also. We found that actually less, less efficient than the solar, but we've done a couple of demonstrations. We're continuing to, we're continuing to study it, but it hasn't proven to be cost-effective yet. Doesn't mean it won't someday, but it isn't there yet.
Was there any talk at all about the idea of adding, this is going to seem, seem a little bit far out there, but adding housing units to, to the facility, maybe on the, a third story of the addition? With the idea being that, trying to cut down on people driving to school or work, meaning that the staff would, would actually be housed on the site in any way? And has that been done anywhere in the county?
I'm not aware of us ever doing that. I know we haven't thought of it on this one. You're talking about teacher housing?
Teacher, staff.
Or staff housing. That's an interesting idea, no, we have not studied that.
Thank you for taking all the time to answer my questions, I appreciate it.
Okay.
And if, if I can just add my sense that, as Josh had, that anything but chain link would be welcome. I know that at some point, there was a question about the property boundary between the school property and this property, has that been hammered out?
It hasn't been resolved, but in nineteen-seventy-seven, we built a twenty-foot-high concrete wall that pretty well said where we're going to stay. So it's not a real cost to pick, to come across and try and get twenty more feet of property if you in some way gave it to us. So we, we went to the disputed line and just built our wall there and called it a day. So it's, the wall's still there, so we don't have any plans to go past it.
And do you have a sense of when it might next be appropriate to come back to us? If it's appropriate to come back to us, any, any sense on that?
Yes, right after we show it to the school board and they say it's viable, it's an approvable project, we would be delighted to show it to you.
Good. Any more questions? Call one.
So I, I will be the third person to say that it would be a shame if you did all that nice landscaping and then you put a chain link fence up.
Okay.
You talked about the back of the building being closed off, there's no exit, fire escapes only?
No, what I meant was, while we're building the construction, we would be closed off. But what we're doing is hooking the new circulation to the old.
Okay, thank you. You're aware that the tree that's in the front of the building, close to the entrance, that now has red over it as part of the new entry, is a very special tree to the community? Do you know that? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I don't know if that's been brought to our attention or not, but it, it happens on every school site. So we, before we knock anything down, we always make sure, have we got all the memorials?
Yeah, that, yeah, it is, in fact, it's a memorial to a, a little girl, I think her name is Lisa. And they just replanted it. So that's just an FYI.
Okay, appreciate it.
The, any stormwater retention that you can do on, on site is, is great. About the hundred-year floodplain, I know that there are a lot of people in the community who are actually watching to see what standard the county holds itself to for the hundred-year floodplain. I, I wasn't here when all of the floodplain stuff happened around the community center, but as I, I was told by one of the people who was involved with the, the development committee, that the, the county in fact held the city to a hundred-year floodplain rule. And it's maybe an exaggeration, but this person stated that we were required to put in a twelve-foot across pipe down the middle of Maple Avenue to hold the water that was never going to be coming down Maple Avenue, because they doubted that it would ever happen that the rest of the stormwater feed-ins into that would ever be built to a capacity that you would ever need to have this one section just in front of our community center that cost a million dollars that was twelve feet wide. So I guarantee you lots of people are going to watch to see if, in fact, you have to put a twelve-foot wide pipe in on Philadelphia Avenue. We'll all be watching.
That, that pipe was sixteen feet wide and twelve feet high.
I'm sorry, I got it wrong, it was sixteen feet wide and twelve feet high. So you, you'll see that in fact, yeah, people are going to be watching with great interest. And let me say that I have a child in the school, and it's my second child to go through the school, and she's in kindergarten, which means that she is going to be a second grader during the year at which everybody is going to be bused to Bethesda. And I, I don't live in the ward that's right across from this, I live in, in Ward Two, but I heard overwhelming negative, negative, negative comments about the idea of sending your kids on a trip that looks to, from what, what our parents tested to be forty-eight minutes from here to the, to the school. We have a lot of, lot of folks in this community that walk to the school. What it's going to mean is if somebody's late, or they have a dentist appointment, or any kind of a problem at all, it's going to make, you know, just a really terrible trip to get your kid over to the school. And it's going to be on East West Highway, which is not very much fun to go back and, and forth on at any kind of a, of a commute hour. And I know you guys aren't the, the folks that do that part, but, you know, people are talking about how they can put their kids someplace else for the year. And, and they're not just blowing hot air, they're really seriously thinking about how they can not have to send their kid for an extra forty-five minutes each way. And it's a lot of the reason why people move here to Tacoma Park, you can put your kid in the neighborhood schools, have a great experience and be happy about it. I personally am really also unhappy about it, and haven't decided yet what I'm going to do with my kid. So I would suggest that they go back, and if they haven't been able to find a place where they can put everybody together, that they think about splitting them out by grades, and maybe putting one grade in one school and another grade in another, another school, but find some way to accommodate these kids closer to where their homes are.
Okay. Well, I don't have too many more. I'm concerned about the entrance on Philadelphia. I used to live on Hodges and was well-aware of the heavy traffic that went around that school and out of it. And, boy. Well, let me offer at least some thoughts to, things to consider. One is, you may consider some kind of gate or barrier at that entrance when the buses are not going in and out, so that kids who come onto the property or other people who come onto the property will not run out into the street. You know, we had a terrible accident, and that's why the fence is there. Don't want to have another one of those. So some kind of barrier when the buses are not going in and out. Another barrier you might consider is across the sidewalk when the buses are going in and out, so that kids that are walking to school, maybe you'll have crossing guards, perhaps. Something to make sure that the buses don't hit a kid. That sidewalk right along the front there is, you know, pretty heavily used. The other is, I, I assume that you have spent time thinking about this. This is a very long, curvy entranceway for the buses. And, you know, to me, it doesn't look like it's going to work very well. It's going to be a long, I mean, all it would take is for one teacher to be backing in and out of one of those parking spaces, or, you know, a fender bender, something like that, and just complete havoc would be wreaked there. I, I hope that, it does, I can't tell how wide it is, will there be, you know, will there be enough space so that, you know, if one bus is off to the side, another bus can go by? That kind of?
Yes, it's designed, designed with two, two lanes, so two buses. One bus can be stopped and another can go by if it's broken. But generally, one bus doesn't pass the other if they're queued up in a bus.
Well, right, I understood that part, but, you know, that, that's assuming the bus can pull off all the way to the side. You know, will that be true on the curvy part as well? I just, I, I, this looks like all it takes is one accident or bus and, and you'd have a
Well, that, that linear footage is needed to stack twenty buses, so
Right.
That's how long it'd be, so whether it was a curve or a straightaway, that's how much area we would need to stack the number of buses that come to this school. So in this case, we got it. We were able to get it at an eight, acceptable 5% rate, and get all the buses off Philadelphia and off Holly and on our property while they're waiting in the afternoon. In the morning, they come, they drop, they go, so it's not a big stack-up. But in the afternoon, they come and sit, so you need a spot for all of them to be. And if that's
Yes.
If it's the school now, eight of them get in, and the other twelve got to find somewhere else to be until they can get in, so. I think separating the two flows of the, two, two major flows of the vehicles has got to help those streets flow back.
Okay, thanks very much.
You're quite welcome.
And we'll coordinate with you on coming back.
And welcome aboard, Mr. Lance.
And the council will take a short break.
So, we'll resume our special session. And this agenda item is a single reading ordinance requiring authorizing replacement of the roof above the council chamber and the rear third floor of the community center. And I guess I'll just note that if there had been other similar things on the agenda, I might have been inclined to put this on a consent agenda. But I still haven't gotten a sense back from the city manager and the clerk how much leeway we have in doing consent agenda where we need to vote and single reading ordinances, but I think we can do it, and we will do so in the future if we have more than one.
Mm-hmm.
Because this seems like pretty much of a no-brainer. We've got money in the budget, the roof needs to be replaced, we have a contractor we've worked with on a similar project, costs are below the amount. What else do we need to know?
I'd say that's it in a nutshell. Both roofs have even a recent experience, or showed us the need for their replacement, continued leaks and problems. We don't know whether to anticipate much damage underneath the roof surface in terms of the insulation or decking, but when you have ongoing leaks, you tend to end up being required to do some base work underneath it. So we're anxious to get this project started so we can solve those problems.
And I like the approach to looking at the potential replacement costs and the lower per square foot costs of the recommended contract.
We had very good experience with Santa Mark when they did the library roof in the other section of the city building. They were on time, they were clean, they were fairly rapid, had good safety controls, tended to work with us very well. I'm sure the other companies would do well as well. They all have great lists of references and do major projects for school systems and whatnot around the area, but we're very comfortable and recommend Santa Mark.
Okay. And my understanding is that there's a good chance that as they do this and they get to the interface between the roof to be replaced and the new roof right over there, where it leaks into a bucket in the atrium on occasion, that as they get to that interface and that flashing, that they should be able to deal with that at that time.
Yeah, we hope so. It's been a bit of an elusive and mystery leak. This is the last rains we had on Sunday, no leakage. You know, so it's been very hard to track or identify its source.
Why don't we just call it a rain garden and let it go?
I just take my caulking gun and go crazy in here.
Don't let you hear that, Ruben. That'll make it wander. So, does somebody want to move this ordinance?
Second.
Any further comment? Karen?
I just have a question. I thought we had talked about this some months ago, about doing this and the council saying, yes, let's move ahead with it. Am I remembering incorrectly?
Yeah, it might have been the discussion for the budget. That's the last time, I think, we talked about this. Probably part of the confusion was when the original plan to reroute the library and sections of the city building came up. These two roof surfaces were discussed as part of the package, and we did have some pricing at that point in time, in which our recommendation at that point in time was let us do some maintenance. We think we can extend, extend their life, and that has proven to be unsuccessful. So it's time to get the roof replaced.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any public comment? Okay, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Snicker?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Yeah, that's it. I keep waiting for Williams at the end, and I'm not there. Thanks very much, Daryl. Next item is a resolution providing for the council winter holiday recess. Would somebody like to move that? Any discussion? We'll be taking a recess and having our next regular council meeting on January 7th. And in the meantime, we won't stop working. We'll have a retreat next week and training for both ethics and lobbying the following week. So even though we won't be here, we'll still be working. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? The next item, oh, I forgot to mention, we're not going to do the review of housing affordability programs at the end. That is going to be postponed to another agenda. And so the remaining item on our work session is discussion of Tacoma Junction loan and whether we want to re-up the loan, or whether we want to pay it off. So Barbara, you go?
Sure. The city purchased property in September of 1995. I think there was some question, I received an inquiry from one council member about the more specific location. Is this the parking lot next to the Co-op building? One thing I just wanted to mention to the council is the financing that the city used to purchase this property is actually a general obligation debt. It is not secured by the property itself. So basically, it is a obligation of the city in general, and in no way is it secured by the property. The city since that time has basically gone through several note extensions. The underlying terms of the debt remain the same. What changed was basically the interest rate. And I would note that in the early years, the principal amount that was tied to that particular year ranged anywhere from $2,500, which was the first three years of the debt issuance. Then it went to $5,000 for two years, and after that, it became a set amount of just over $20,000 a year. So the principal amount was basically structured, kind of a staggered amount from the very beginning. What has changed as we went through the various note extensions was the interest rate. This was basically coming up due again in September of this year. The reason it is not appearing before the council until now is that there was some question, working through the process with Bank of America in terms of just kind of reviewing the history of this. Apparently, as it's gone through the various iterations, there's been some changes in the banking industry, and so Bank of America was trying to get up to speed itself on what exactly this was about. So this is the first opportunity we've had to come before the council. The choices before the council at this juncture are really whether or not you want to extend the note for three years or some other period of time. The interest rate that they have offered is slightly higher than it was three years ago, which really isn't a surprise given what's been happening with interest rates. But basically, the proposed interest rate would be 6.79% if the city did choose to extend the note for another three years. The other option is the city could basically just go ahead and pay off this amount. And that is something that I discussed with Ms. Brooks, the Director of Finance, and obviously part of that consideration is whether or not the city has the cash to do that. In talking to Ms. Brooks about it, both of us would recommend that the city go ahead and just pay off the note. We have incurred kind of considerable interest costs over the years. We will not be in a position to sell this property anytime in the near future, mainly because this is part of the site where the temporary fire station will be while it's under construction. So our recommendation is that we go ahead and proceed with paying this off. As I noted in the agenda cover sheet, as of today, the payoff amount was $156,410. Based on the current interest rate of 5.98%, each day that it is not paid off, there is a cost of approximately $26 for each day after today. If the council does choose to proceed with paying this off, there would be a budget amendment needed to appropriate the additional money. There's about $35,000 approved in the budget. At the time we did the budget, we were contemplating continuing the note, so there would be a need to transfer funds from the unappropriated reserve to the debt service division of the budget to basically pay off the note. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just let me ask first, how much the unappropriated reserves are at this point?
We haven't really touched it to any great extent. I'm sorry, Councilmember Williams. There's probably close to $400,000 in that account. And I think the only portion that's been appropriated from it this year was about $40,000 to basically repair the pedestrian sidewalk on the Maple Avenue Bridge. So most of it remains untouched.
Okay. Dan, and then Ruben, and then Terry.
Sometimes you can prepay loans and shorten their length. And do we ever, do we ever do that?
It hasn't come up. Most of the debt that the city currently has were long-term bonds. So, they were structured where you have sort of a relatively nominal principal payment and then it was anticipated that if the city chose to pay it off, there was almost kind of a balloon payment, if you will, at the end.
This is probably, I know this is not the topic of selling that property, but I'm interested in that discussion and I encourage us to have that discussion soon.
Ruben?
Yes, I do have a question. This $156,000 is a fair amount of money and if the...one could think of other uses for that money. Two that come to mind are a gym and affordable housing. So, I do wonder, you know, are there trade-offs here that we're implicitly making by paying it off? Does this mean we'll have greater difficulty in building a gym or it constricts our choices on affordable housing or any other? I mean, those are just two that popped into my head. You know, other folks will have ideas that...
And Barb, would you say how much was in the current budget for this? 25 or 35?
$35,000.
So, that the amount that we will be talking from the unappropriated reserves is about $121,000?
I mean, I think Councilmember Snapper is, you know, raising an issue in terms of, you know, what do you want to use the funds in the unappropriated reserve for? And obviously, that's a policy decision for the council. I think from the perspective of Ms. Brooks and myself, I guess what we look at at this point is we're paying more in interest cost on the property than we are basically in what we're going to earn. That's obviously a somewhat different issue than I believe Councilmember Snapper is raising, which is what are the alternative uses of the money? But I think from a strict financial standpoint, we don't believe it's prudent to basically continue paying more in interest than you have to in what we're earning on the money.
Sure. And thank you, Mayor Williams. My inclination in my personal life as well as my public life and public responsibilities is to minimize debt. And that said, I support the recommendation of our finance director. I also would just make the observation to Councilmember Snapper that it's a...it's possible when we decide to go ahead with the gym, if we do need to borrow money, that we could then borrow the money at that point in time because we would probably need to borrow more than $120,000.
Josh?
Just so I understand the apples-to-apples comparison. So, it's either we pay $156,000 today or we get $26 a day that we don't have to pay basically.
See if I can answer this. The $26 a day is basically what the payoff amount increases per day. That is at the old interest rate of 5.98%. I think they were just carrying that if the city wished to pay off the obligation now. I'm not sure I'm totally answering your question, Councilmember Wright. Obviously, at some future point, the payoff amount, the principal, would go down, but it would be at a higher interest rate. So, I'm not sure I'm answering your question exactly, but...
But so, if we decide to pay it off where we don't have $156,000, which we could use, as Ruben said, for other things, or we could just have as more security for unforeseen expenses?
Correct.
And if we...so, if we do pay it off, then we no longer have a daily interest payment, which I understand that $26 a day is under the five and change rate. It would be six and change instead, so maybe it's $35 a day. I don't know the exact calculation.
On an annual basis, and this is very rough, what I tried to go back through and do is I had sort of the original amortization schedule, if you will, for the obligation. One of the difficult things without going back into really old financial records was not getting exact amounts. But in recent years, and the interest rate would not be changing that dramatically, we've been paying just over $18,000 a year in interest costs.
And what amount of money do we earn in interest for having $156,000 in the bank?
It really varies depending on what investment instruments are available. I mean, obviously, we're constantly looking at debt and our cash flows. And talking to Ms. Brooks, she said roughly we're getting about probably 4.5%. It's kind of generally a good figure in terms of what we're getting in terms of rate of return on the investment of our money right now.
$6,000.
She equated that to, well, she actually carried it out to 4.51%. She said it nets to about $9.77 per day.
So, maybe 6,000...we make 6,000, but we pay 18,000.
Right. So, just the real cost of not paying off is closer to 12.
Come on.
I bet we pay it off.
That's what I think too. I go back to when we did this whole loan and I don't think we ever contemplated it running this long. And the interest that we've paid over the 12 years and the payoff, you know, the original price of the property, the cost to us is way up above what we paid granted the worth of the property. This potential selling price has gone up, but I'm sure it's gone up, it's gone down. Who knows where it is right now and we're years away from determining what we can do with it. And we can't even go back to the records to figure out what the real costs are without a lot of work and it's better to just clean it up. And we've got the cash available. So, do we have a...it sounds like we have sense to do this and clean it up and we'll come back with a ordinance to...
I move.
Do whatever's going to be needed. We're in work session now.
Do we need anything more to pay it off? Do we need anything more to pay it off?
We'll have to move the unappropriated reserve.
At times what we have done, and it's up to the council's discretion, obviously, since you're not meeting again until January, if there's a clear indication from the council that you're comfortable with paying it off, we have at times gone ahead and just formalized the transaction at a later date through the budget amendment process. Obviously, I want to make sure before I tell Ms. Brooks that it's okay to wire $156,000, that the council is clear on that because once it's done, then obviously the budget amendment really becomes more of a kind of discretionary matter for the council, which is doing unnecessary housekeeping.
I would suggest we have a voice vote.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, let's just have a show of hands of people who would like the city manager to go ahead and arrange for the payback of the loan. I see six hands.
I would vote no, just because I would favor the flexibility of having the money in the bank. I don't think it's an issue of cleaning it up, it's just a financing decision. But I'm not opposed to the idea, but if the rest of the council would vote in that way, I think it would be appropriate for the city to go forward and pay off the note.
Do you have what you need?
Yes, I think we'll go ahead and make necessary arrangements to get it paid off and work with the mayor to get a budget amendment on the earliest opportunity in January so we can formalize the transfer. Thank you.
Good. So, I think that takes care of things and we are adjourned until January 7th.